It's five o'clock. We'll call this meeting a Monday, November 2020 City Council order. Our first order of business would be the adoption of the agenda. Move to that.
I should approve.
Is there any discussion? Have I voted favoritized right hand? Close likewise? Alright, agenda is adopted. Uh, next thing we have over business is we have boards and commissions discussion. Thank you, Melissa.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members.
Alright, you gotta talk louder, I'm sorry.
Okay. See if this helps. Included in your folders is a listing of your current boards and commission members with the district that they live in, a listing of those members whose terms are expiring, and copies of the applications we've received. On your commission on community relations and development, we have two vacancies, one being eligible for reappointment, and fifteen applications received to date. The municipal golf course, we have three vacancies, and one of those is eligible for reappointment. Under the historic district commission, we have two vacancies. However, both of those members are eligible to be reappointed. Under your parks and recreation committee, we have five vacancies, four of which are eligible for reappointment, and the other position is your student position. The mayor's committee for persons with disabilities, we have four vacancies with one eligible for reappointment. The planning commission, we have three vacancies with one eligible for reappointment. Travel and tourism, we have three vacancies, two eligible for reappointment. And on your list of those vacancies, there's also board recommendations listed if we received any from the board itself or staff. At this time, I would open it up to council to discuss.
Well, I do have a question. The people that are eligible for reappointment, has anybody talked to them and asked if they want to be reappointed?
I do believe each board has discussed that. Um, as far as I know, those that we have listed eligible for reappointment are willing to serve. The ones that we heard were not wanting to be reappointed have shared that they were resigning.
So just for example, the commission of community relations, uh, you got Earl Nixon who says he's not eligible, and you got Stephen McFarland who says he is eligible.
And he has expressed interest to serve again.
Okay, so, so do y'all wanna, if they're already on here, y'all wanna keep them on here, or do y'all wanna be new or what?
So keep them on there. Yeah.
I mean, I, I'm not opposed to that per se, but um, I do know there are some people on this list that we saw last year wanting to be on these boards. So I do want us to consider, um, new representation as well. I'm not opposed to, to keeping the reappointments, but I'm looking at a couple of names now that I know have been trying to get on this particular board for three years now, so.
Oh, which board?
The community relations in particular. But I'm all for Stephen McFarland still serving on that board. Uh, but I would like to recommend Amari Oliver from District Six. Uh, it was her first choice, and I do know that she has been wanting to serve on this board for a couple of years now.
Well, we need to, I think what we need to do is get, get all the, all the applicants, and then we can sit down and go through them.
I do, I do have a question also, Melissa. You said planning commission. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Uh, planning commission you said had three vacancies, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, seeing the list, I see one of the people that I recommended, District Three is only ha- only has one person. Would they take preferential treatment or, in, in the decision-making process if they're the only person from a district? If there, there's, there's only one person from District Three that's actually, whereas others have two or three people from their district. So how does that process play out?
That's, um, whatever council's consensus is for appointment. Um, usually you, council in the past has tried to, you know, have equal representation as much as possible. So that would be based upon council's decision.
We actually talked about that, so we should be trying to equal it out.
Without that individual, there wouldn't be any representation from our district at all.
Well, let's go back to, uh, the community relations. We got the Amari Oliver as a recommendation. Is there anybody else that wants to make a recommendation of anyone else? If not, we can do it later.
I think, uh, Councilman Polak was saying that is, was she a Lancaster?
No, April Rojas for planning commission.
I'm looking at the wrong district.
Yes, sir.
We're talking about two different boards.
Yep.
Mayor Allen is on the community relations board. He was talking about the planning board.
Yeah, I'm trying to go board by board.
Which one are you working on now?
Right now, we're on community relations, the very first one. And we need one more recommendation.
Was she a Lancaster?
Who?
Was she a Lancaster? And she's from District One?
Marcus Lewis, uh, applied for, uh, board service, and that was his first choice. Marcus Lewis?
Marcus Lewis.
I don't know him, but, uh, that was his first choice.
And that's also four people from, from District Two as well. So if we're gonna consider spreading it out evenly, we have to look at that. As Washeah Lancaster, it was her fir- first choice as well. So if, if we recommend Marcus Lewis, that would be four residents, um, on that particular dis- I mean, on that board from one individual district, so.
April Rojas is, is in Dist- District Three, and you don't have anybody in District Three on that board. That's...
Yeah.
I, I think you need to have them evenly spread.
Who did you say?
April Rojas is in District Three. It's her second choice, but you need somebody from every district.
I agree.
Well, does this tell us, oh, your hair goes right here.
Using this too.
Mayor Allen, if you look at this one right here, are you looking at this one?
I'm looking at one.
It, it tells you, we have it, it'll show you how many people are, um, from what district they're representing if you look at that.
Okay, so like you're saying, this is missing every, I mean, needs, needs two or three people from Three, District Three. By y'all's criteria, y'all just said.
We only have one vacancy, but we could at least have one person from District.
Well, no, you got more than one vacancy. You got two vacancies.
Oh, we do?
Well, I say you got two vacancies, that's if you don't reappoint Stephen McFarland. And I, I mean, I don't know any reason not to, to, I don't know.
Well, I'm okay with reappointing him, I'm just saying.
Okay, so.
And just to speak on behalf of April Rojas, I know her personally. She really wanted to be on the planning, uh, so I don't wanna overwhelm her with being on more than one. That was her first choice, and I appreciate, uh, Councilman Broadway for bringing that up with District Three. But she, she really wanted to be on the planning, that's what she wanted to kinda, she expressed that to me, that that's what she wanted to serve on. But, but I see there's nobody else in that district for that as well, but, um, however, however you guys decide.
I mean, I'd most rather her have what she want, what she wants.
Yeah, that's her first choice.
And just so council's aware, um, you can only serve on one board at a time.
Right, okay.
Alright, well, right now, you got April Rojas either on the commission of community relations or planning. That's what y'all asked.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Her first was planning, so that's why I brought her.
So I think we just could, keep going through it, and we can come back and fix it. Alright, the next one's goals for municipal golf course. And it looks to me like this, um, the board recommends Rose Wright for appointment. Am I reading that right, Melissa?
Yes, sir.
And that's the only appointment?
Um, and then you would have one more vacancy, 'cause there's three total, and if you appoint or recommend Rose Wright and then, um, Joe Thomas, if you reappoint him, then that would still leave you with one vacancy.
Okay, so, now I see here also, but, well, the county appoints the county people though, right?
No, sir.
Or do we do it?
Not on, not on the golf course.
Do we do that too? Like you got Wells Warner has, um, resigned. So do we need to go ahead and replace him?
Yeah.
Preferably, yes, sir.
Alright. Alright, so our three vacancies are Joe Thomas, Wells Warner, and a vacant. Am I reading that right?
Yes, sir.
Alright, so what do y'all wanna do? Joe Thomas is eligible for reappointment. Anybody have a problem with that? Alright.
And I know Richard Farfor, yeah, he's in my district, but I know he plays golf out there.
You know what?
I know he plays golf out there, Richard Farfor.
I mean, is that, are you trying to make a recommendation for him to be on it or something?
Well, he's up there still.
He's already on.
He's already there, okay. Rose Wright?
Oh, yeah, I got it, okay.
Rose Wright. I don't have any problem with that.
Who is Rose Wright?
I, I'm not sure. I think she's one of the ladies that plays out there a lot. That's all I know.
But it's already three from the county, huh?
I don't know if she's county or city.
Well, it says only choice county.
She would be city.
She's a county resident, I guess that's what you're asking.
Do what now?
She's a county resident, that's what he was asking.
Yeah, I don't know, that's what I'm saying.
It's, it's.
If you look at the, the single sheet, it's up there. This one. Yeah.
I just can't tell where she lives. Am I missing it?
It just says county, if you look at this one.
It says only choice county.
Yeah.
If where everybody else says District Five, District Six, District Five.
So we're gonna put, her name is, that's what y'all telling me.
I have said they've already got three on them, which from the county.
We already got three from the county.
But she would be replacing Wells Warner from...
The county.
From the county, and then it looks like, if I may, Lisa Pope, it, it's her first choice from District Five. And then you have Kevin Brown, it's listed as his second choice, and he's from District Six. Or Michael Gleason, third choice from District Five.
Well, if it's Lisa Pope's first choice.
Where are you looking at that? What paper are you on?
Applicants for your boards and commissions. It's tiny.
Okay, I got it. Alright, so what did y'all decide? Rose?
Do we choose Michael Gleason, Gleason because, to add better representation across the city? Or do we consider it, it was his third choice, but we have someone who it was their second choice, but we already have a representative from District Six, so we could add District Five by choosing Michael Gleason? That's what I would recommend.
I have no problems with that.
Okay, I'm, just tell me who you, your name, I can't hear you, I'm slapping.
Michael Gleason.
And that's for goals for municipal golf course?
Mm-hmm.
There's nobody from One. Let's see. There's nobody for Five. Alright, have one, six. And like, we have no representation from District Five, so that would be Lisa Pope, and that was her first choice.
That's her third choice. Tom- Thomas Lockamy, his first choice was. I think that would be a good option. I saw his resume.
Okay, wait, I'm sorry, uh, Mayor Allen, I'm gonna retract that. So Lisa Pope, it was her first choice, and she's from District Five, so I think...
So we're gonna switch Lisa Pope instead of Rose Wright?
Well, I think y'all had already chose Lisa Pope. I just needed to retract my statement, 'cause I said there wasn't a District Five representative, but there actually is now. I know, sorry for confusing you on that.
I voted for Lisa Pope.
Yeah.
Lisa Pope. Alright, Melissa, you got that?
Yes, sir.
Are you sure?
I'm positive. We've got Lisa Pope, Rose Wright, and we are reappointing Mr. Joe Thomas.
We're doing what about Joe Thomas?
Reappointing him.
Okay, reappoint.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, who's the third one?
You've got Joe Thomas, Rose Wright, and Lisa Pope. And we, I will bring this back to you guys to officially appoint them at the next meeting.
Yeah, and send it to us like two or three days ahead of time, so we can get this over. Alright, so now we're at historic district commission. Well, I got Wiley Leonard and Alicia Pierce, and they both look like they're eligible. They good? Anybody okay with that?
That's fine with me.
Alright. Goals of Recreation.
You're doing a good job. How many vacancies were there on that board?
Two vacancies, and they're both eligible for reappointment. That was Wiley Leonard and Alicia Pierce.
Okay. Alright, Goals of Recreation and Parks. Um, it looks like four of them are eligible for reappointment, if that's what y'all wanna do. And there's one, the Tannen, Tannen in it, that we're going to replace. Is that right, Melissa?
Yes, um, but that will be your student position, and I don't believe we have any application.
Right, so we gotta find a student.
We do.
That'd be some good for, um, Taj to do.
Yes, sir. What part, some, uh, rec, right?
Yes, sir. I don't believe any of these are students.
We had a good student when I was on.
I used to be on it when I was a student. Initially, um, historical board, um, Alana Moore. I think she was ineligible for lack of attendance.
I'll have to check on that one.
Okay, okay.
I will.
Melissa?
Yes, ma'am.
This is Jennifer. Um, Councilman Williams was correct at the last meeting of the Historic District Commission, they did vote to remove Alana Moore from the board this, in the past year. So there will be another vacancy for that board.
Okay.
So I, I saw actually Mr. Thomas Lockamy, and his resume looked very good. Um, no one, he's out of District Five, if no one has a problem with that.
Alright, go back and tell me where we're at.
I don't have any problem with that.
Well, we got three already from District Five.
Alana Moore, they said at the last Historic District Commission meeting, due to lack of attendance.
Hold on, I gotta find her, she's been on board.
Who's that?
Alana Moore. She was representing District Five.
So what does alternative members mean? Are those people on the board?
They are, and they serve, um, in the absence of like a full member. They can, they... Jennifer, correct me if I'm wrong, but the alternative members on your Historic District Commission, they can only vote if a member is absent, right, Ron? Okay.
Alright, and that's gonna be, uh...
So it's like they would be filling in to make sure there's a quorum.
So if we were to make one of the alternatives an actual member, we would need to choose another alternative, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, so, so Councilmember Williams has recommended for the Historic District to put Thomas Lockamy on there. Does anybody got a follow with that?
In place of Alana.
Yes.
In place of who?
Alana.
Ms. Moore, Alana Moore.
In the Historic Commission?
Yes. So you don't see that as a vacancy, but, um, Jennifer just confirmed that she, there is a vacancy now, 'cause she was removed from the board.
I thought they just came on the thing and said there wa- that there was a vacancy now.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
I, but if that happens for the chairman of that board, he needs to send a letter to us if a board member's not participating.
Am I not right?
I mean, I, I just think to cover us, we, we, we need to do that.
Well, I mean, that which is a whole other conversation. To me, if, if somebody's not attending, we should, the chairman of the board or chairman of the department, send them a letter anyway. And say, hey, look, we've had six meetings, you've come to one. That's not gonna work. And I think we should do that anyway. Everybody okay with that?
I agree with it.
I believe that's in our...
I thought they did.
Procedures. I believe that's in our rules of procedure.
Well, I think it's in our rules. Well, sometimes we have rules we don't quite follow. But we wanna probably do a ve- better job of just being sure what's what.
I don't have any problem putting that person on, but I think we need a letter first.
Thomas?
Thomas, um, Thomas Lockamy. Lockamy, District Five.
Okay. So that, so on District Five, we're gonna do Wiley Leonard, Alicia Pierce, and Thomas Lockamy. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Alright. Goals for Parks and Rec. Um, we said we were gonna reappoint everybody who was eligible, and then Taj is gonna find us a student.
Yes.
Yeah, we all agree with that?
Yeah.
Yeah? Alright. The mayor's committee for persons with disability. It looks like we got the Tyrone Stark, he's eligible for reappointment. And it looks like the other three all need to be replaced.
So we need to fill three people on persons with disability?
That's right.
Some of these people work really, really hard, and some people don't work hardly at all.
Well, it looks to me like we got a pretty long list of people to pick from, if I'm reading it right.
I see a David Snodgrass. I'm probably messing that up, forgive me. It's his first choice, and he's in District Six.
Where are you looking?
Applicants for boards and commissions. This one right here.
Oh, you're going back to that other thing?
Yeah, I'm kinda looking at them simultaneously. I'm looking at both of them just to try to see if we can spread out the representation.
Who did you just say?
Well, I was looking at David Snodgrass, and I'm probably messing that up, but...
Yeah, first choice.
But then I just noticed we have... We don't have any District Two representation, which would include Ms. Sheila Exum, Marcus Lewis.
We don't have any District One representation as well, or Four.
So Washeah Lancaster, District One. Melissa, what does only qualifying board mean?
Um, there's residency requirements for all of our boards other than the mayor's committee for persons with disabilities.
Okay.
Whether it's, um, you know, majority of our boards, you have to be within the city limits. And I think, um, there's a board or two where you can be out in the ETJ.
Okay.
Alright, so we're waiting on names for there. Washeah Lancaster? Hold on, hold on, hold on. Yeah, okay, Washeah Lancaster.
And David Snodgrass.
David Snodgrass.
And we need one more, right?
Yep.
Did, did, um, Ms. Oliver get picked on any other board?
I don't know if they decided to put her on the community relations board or not, so.
Excuse me, I, I want to respond to what Councilman Matthew said. The commission has not made a recommendation. They won't meet till Thursday.
Hadn't made the recommendation for what?
For anyone for the board, because they will not meet till Thursday.
Are you talking about the persons with disabilities?
No, she's from the community relations.
Uh-huh.
Community relations.
So, so it will be left to town. The commission don't meet till Thursday.
Right, okay.
I, I totally didn't understand. I mean, I'm not sure what she's trying to say.
Pretty much what we were doing. I mean, um, I made a recommendation for Amari Oliver, but, um, Councilman Williams was saying if we did not choose her for that board, he was gonna recommend her for this board, so.
Okay. Alright, well, running it on to, I got is Lancaster and Snodgrass.
That's right.
Are there any more? Do we wanna go ahead and do one more?
But we need one more, right?
Ms. Amari Oliver.
It looks like two of those, just, just so you're aware, are recommended for consideration for your community relations board. So I guess if, if they're not appointed to one, then I'll send it out to you guys, and you guys just let me know.
Okay.
And I'll highlight those two.
If you do Snodgrass, he's District Six, and that would put three on from District Six. And so I would suggest, and that was his first choice, not doing, um, Amari Oliver, because it's overload to, to persons with disabilities with too many people from District Six. District Two. How many do we need?
So there's also Washeah Lancaster, who's District One, and there is no District One representative at all. We do have a District Five, District Two, but we don't have District Two.
We don't have anyone from One, Two, or Five, or Four.
One, you said One, Two, or Four?
And there's nobody from Four who's applied.
Yeah.
So it'd be somebody from District Two, which would be Marcus Lewis or Sheila Exum. And it's both of them second choice. I don't know either one of them, so.
Well, until somebody tells me differently, we got Washeah Lancaster and David Snodgrass.
I'm sorry.
I said until somebody tells me differently, we've named Washeah Lancaster and David Snodgrass. Those are the two we picked so far.
And need one more?
Yeah.
One more.
Alright, so we got a district.
What about Marcus Lewis?
Cause he, he has to be on community relations, and he, uh...
Okay.
We had put him there, so why don't we put him?
Alright, Marcus Lewis. Alright. That finishes that, right? Alright, uh, next we got the Goals for Planning Commission.
And if I may, um, just so you guys are aware, staff has requested council consider reappointing or letting, um, Chris Boyett extend his term, um, so that there is, um, um, let me see. And like an experienced member on the board, um... um, let me see, like an experienced member on the board, um, because I believe majority of your members have been on there for like a year and a half or not even two full years.
Well, these people that are on here now, this isn't who's on there now though, right?
This is everybody.
This is everybody that wanted to be on there?
Yes, sir.
All right. So then we gotta go to, you got John Watson's resigned, you got Anthony Slater is eligible for reappointment, and you got Chris Boyet you're trying to extend, right?
Yes.
But what does it mean not eligible for reappointment? What does that mean?
They've served their time.
Normally they've served two full terms, or either they have resigned.
They've served two, I'm just trying to clarify. So that means Chris has served twice on this board, and they're requesting that we extend his term?
Yes.
Well, the board, their staff, our staff has recommended that we extend Chris Boyet, simply because he's the most experienced one on the Planning Commission. I think he's currently the chairman.
Is everybody good with that?
I'm not in particular. It's just something that we're gonna have to always do and keep in mind. We made one accommodation, we're gonna have to make it all the time, and I think...
You know, I don't think we've ever done that.
We have done it one time for the Tourism Council.
Yeah, I don't remember but one time. Until we can get some people, that's the hardest boards we've got, and we just need some experience on that.
I don't think it's, I don't think that experience is the biggest factor because we, they go by guidelines, and we have legal that would make sure that they are abiding by the rules and regulations. I honestly believe in fresh set of eyes.
I think you got to factor experience in there too.
I think that people who have sat on that board and watched him have gained experience from him being here.
Well, that's one of the problems, I can't, I don't know who's on the board, I can't tell.
You got a sheet.
There's a list.
You got a sheet.
Look at your staple sheet.
This is who's on the board right now.
Oh wait, I'm sorry.
Right here, on the back page.
Jennifer, can you help with the experience, the time on the boards for these people?
Um, just to give you a little background, uh, several years ago, when this topic brought up, Boards and Commissions, I think you, the City Council at that time was reviewing, um, trying to alternate terms and stagger terms so that we not have all experienced members coming off at one time. Then, when we directed management to do that, I think the manager at that time looked through and just picked certain members to come off at some time. So with Chris Boyet, Tom, technically, that's the name that was selected, random, and that's how he is, but we decided John Lawson to not want to be reappointed. So I do not have, Chris Boyet is not extended, then I will not have what I consider an experienced member with regards to, uh, running a meeting, policy procedures, that sort of thing. I do have an entire board of new members, with the exception of Anthony Slater. I think he's just completing his second year.
Well, based on that, let's just keep Chris on there for a year. Can we do that? Will everybody be all right with that?
A one-year term.
Yeah.
I support that.
Huh?
I support that.
Yeah. That's another from Brady.
I'm still trying to figure out what, I'm looking at the Tourism, you say Chris, obviously.
We are planning.
Right here, on this one, on this one. Look on the back. You see it?
I don't...
I think we gotta go with our staff here.
I'm not gonna be outvoted, but overall, I think that the board would be just fine without them. You know, we have our city attorney that sits in those meetings. I don't see how we...
You know what that means, Dee?
I'll sit on those on a regular basis. The Historic District Commission, they ask me too, but Planning Commission is once in a blue moon, when they feel like they might have an issue that's gonna come up, it'd be difficult, then they'll ask me if I can, but I don't attend those regularly.
All right.
And a term, just a term is how many years?
Four.
Three years.
There's three.
So wait a minute, we have, uh, hold on, I'm sorry, we have, Bishop Slater, we have him who is just completing a term. That's three years.
His first term, he was appointed on April of 2018. When we went through and changed all of our terms to three years.
Okay.
That's how some of them were adjusted, so he was appointed on April the 2nd, 2018.
I mean, I would like to think two years is experience to me, but you know, the majority's gonna win this one, but I'm just saying, if we have members who are sitting on our boards for two years and they're not, I mean...
Well, this is my concern. This is a board that I see in my person in my district, April, which is across the board on all categories, is probably one of the only people, with the exception of Tanya Barber from District three, that showed any concern in serving on any board. And you have two from District two, one from District one, one from five, one from four. So my thing is, let's put a person from District three, that way you have representation in all five, well, five districts at least, on that board, rather than two from one. And this is Ms. Rojas's first choice. That was the young lady I was speaking about earlier, and I would like to have representation for my district to serve on that board.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree.
I think we're just...
I don't have a problem with that, but we got...
We got two from one district and got one from every other district, so if we can knock one of those two off and have one of my people from my district, I have nobody representing District three in any capacity.
I don't have a problem with that, but Rojas.
Yes, sir.
The only thing is, I just wanna support our staff with Chris Boyet, that's...
But did our, did our board make the recommendation to keep Chris, or is it, are we...
The board, the Planning Board, not us, not this board.
No, 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 I'm not talking about...
Councilman Matthews?
Go ahead.
Um, the Planning, that's very, I think from a staff standpoint, some of this conversation here tonight is a little premature, because some boards are not to be meeting until your first meeting in December, but that's the reason why I just currently had it listed as staff recommendation. This one, the Planning Commission, attend, uh, for their December, to give you that recommendation. And you don't have to consider that, that has to, the way we've handled it in the past, where the board actually does give council a recommendation to say, I guess, what the committee is pointing.
Did anybody understand that?
No.
Yeah, I think I did. So if you look on your sheet, what Councilmember Matthews is asking is, what did the board recommend, correct? And what Jennifer's telling you is, the board hasn't met to make a recommendation on it yet. Is that correct, Jennifer?
Yes, that is, I mean, applications that are still being accepted, such as the City Park Office, but we were not gonna take applications to Planning Commission until their meeting at the end of November, which would be the last month, the next month or the Monday after, and then we would bring that recommendation back to City Council at your first meeting in December.
Okay, let's do it. And all these applications are the new people, so we really don't even know who they are.
I don't think we need to wait, because those applications, we already had the applications in place, there was ample time to use these applications that we had, you know? That's just being inconsiderate to those people.
Could I add something, sir? Historically in the past, as I understand it, you typically get presented this information in November, which is what Melissa's doing, and then you talk about the first meeting in December and you make it, you finally sign off on the paperwork in mid-December. So we're a little ahead of what staff thought we would be right now. Council can obviously do what they wanna do right now if you'd like, but I think that's why Jennifer's board in particular will be meeting to discuss this at the end of this month, and then they'll be able to give you their recommendation.
Let's hold off until they make their recommendation.
Yeah, just hold it in the bag.
Yeah.
I have that correct, right Melissa?
Yes, sir.
Let's hold what?
I mean, let's hear what they want.
We're just gonna hold up on the Planning Commission period.
Right, until they meet.
Is that cool?
Oh, okay.
All right, so we're gonna hold up on the Planning Commission, Goals for Tourism Council.
All right, you got two eligible, and one you only need, so you really only have, if we reappoint them, we only have one, correct?
Yes, sir.
Well, this board has a recommendation here, so if we're gonna follow the board, with Ms. Sheila Exum.
And I don't know Sheila Exum, so I can't...
But you have Tanya Barber from your district, too, but it's the board, I don't know.
It was her first choice, and the only other district that doesn't have representation is five and six, and Snodgrass, we already recommended for another one.
But you got three, you got two.
And so...
So what have y'all decided?
Three. Thomas Lockamy, it was, is a District five.
I thought we put him somewhere else.
I thought we had him over there in the Mayor's.
All right, so we got him out of the way.
I thought we did, now maybe I'm wrong.
Snodgrass, we already put him somewhere. Lockamy, we put somewhere. We've already got two from District three. That's why I say Sheila Exum, that was her first choice from District two, and well, to get somebody from District two.
Mayor Allen, did we choose, do you have David Snodgrass for the Mayor's Committee for Disabilities?
Mm-hmm.
We did, okay.
So we've only got to pick one.
Yeah, I've got David Snodgrass on the Committee for Persons with Disabilities.
What'd you think, Tom? I don't know. I guess Sheila.
No. I know Lockamy.
We've already appointed him, so...
Could we put Tanya on that board? I know we have two from District three, but...
What'd you say?
Uh, Ms. Barber. I know, like I said, a lot of the other ones are staff, but District three's probably represented the least on a lot of these boards.
I don't have a bit of trouble with Tanya.
That was her first choice.
She'll work.
First choice as well, and I know she'd be active on that board.
Well, again, you...
She'll work, I know that.
But you also have to consider there's a board recommendation, and we've decided to not choose anybody and wait on a board's recommendation, so we gotta, what side are we gonna be on when it comes to accepting recommendations from the boards? And I'm not against, I'm not against it.
They recommend Sheila Exum, but that's why I said, you know...
Okay.
Yeah, I just want us to be even keel across the board.
I agree.
I have no, I have no disagreement with Ms. Barber serving at all, I just wanted to...
Mr. Mayor, Sheila Exum, who we recommended, right?
Um, I'm okay.
Sheila Exum.
Say it again.
You say Sheila Exum, right?
Yeah, the board recommends Sheila Exum.
So Sheila Exum.
Yeah, that does.
All right, so the only thing we didn't do is Planning Commission, right?
Yes, sir.
And Mayor Wiley here, I know, when I looked at the agenda, and that's why I didn't have it added as a new item, I just saw Boards and Commissions discussions, and, uh, the board that we had discussed, which we hadn't even, hadn't come up with a name for regarding racial equity, or whatever the name, I thought that this might be a time, if it's appropriate. Um, I had two submissions for, uh, actually, I had two constituents, one from outside of my district, and one that just kinda wanted to give a recommendation or a template as to what they thought the board should consist of, cause I feel the best way to appropriately address a commission that someone plans to serve on is to ask or solicit their ideas. So they had, they took the time to just write two brief paragraphs, if I can take the time to read that while we're on this discussion of boards, if it's appropriate. Okay, um, so I have one from a Mr. Maurice Mitchell, who resides at 206 South Claiborne Street, which is in Mr. Broadway's District, District two. Um, it reads, Dear City Council, or to whom this may concern, my name is Maurice Mitchell, I'm a lifetime resident of Goldsboro Wayne County, I reside in District two. I would like to thank Mayor Chuck Allen and the rest of the Goldsboro City Council for adopting the idea of having a Race Relations Committee. I think that this is an outstanding idea, especially in the times that we live in right now. I feel that all races of people all over the world are dealing with racial issues. I feel strongly that in an effort to understand one another, we must understand, we must understand one another. We must understand the differences in culture, values, economic background, and educational exposure. These are the type things and situations that will separate us as a people and stop us from having un-unified communities. I would learn nothing more to serve on this Race Relations Committee, I would definitely bring my expertise and voice to the forefront. I have been in business for 25 years, and I have had the pleasure of working within hiring and training all races of people, whether it be on the contracting side of negotiating or whether it was on the hiring side of labor. I have also had the opportunity to work in the socially economically distressed neighborhoods in many areas all over Eastern North Carolina. I feel the honor and respect should be given to all men and women of every race. I also feel the conversation working together and getting to know one another, we could achieve this goal through particular, this particular committee. I have seen Goldsboro Wayne County grow over the years, and I have seen Goldsboro become the example of Eastern North Carolina. I would be honored to be chosen to serve on this committee. Respectfully submitted, Maurice Mitchell. Uh, the one from my district is Trevor Jackson, uh, his template of the Racial and Racial Disparity Committee. He says, this committee shall make inquiries to make sure that fair, equal practices are carried out within the various city departments. The committee will seek to evaluate activities and businesses practices to help prevent racial and unbiased practices from occurring within the jurisdiction of the City of Goldsboro, legal authority. The committee will take the temperature of the racial climate in the city by conducting interviews within the city with various citizens. The committee will work to create an atmosphere that is conducive to form health, nondiscriminatory free communities within the City of Goldsboro, North Carolina. This committee should also help the City of Goldsboro create a plan to promote diversity, cohesiveness, and improve racial relations and understanding within our culture. And that's all I have. Thank you.
I'd like to kinda add to that, because this came out today, and I think it's really, it's the North Carolina League of Municipalities, it just established a Racial Equity Task Force, it's a 14-member task force, and I'll read this, in the North Carolina League of Municipalities Board of Directors established a 14-member task force that will examine practical steps that cities and towns can take to address racial inequities and related issues. And I think that group, once it comes out, will give us our roadmap for what we really need to be doing to get what we got. And I think this group will, I don't know a lot of them, they're 14 members, but I think taking these letters and then taking the recommendations off this task force will do a lot for us to establish what we need, and will give us a framework for what we need. And that's just my two cents. It just came out today.
It was also mentioned that, I don't know if it was you, Mr. Sam was gonna reach out to Mr. Foster to get his ideas?
I think you mentioned you wanted to see what Mr. Foster's idea was, and you particularly thought that this should be outside of the city oversight, if I understand correctly, so I'm not sure where you sit on that, but, you know, before we look at individuals, we probably wanna make sure we understand, you know, what the mission is and what we're trying to get.
So you're saying that I need to reach out to him?
No, I, I, I mean, we can certainly call him in to present information on this, if that's what the board would like to do.
I don't know what to say about it. So I didn't, I didn't understand what you were talking about.
So the last time we talked about this, I don't know who suggested it, but I think it was a good suggestion to bring in Mr. Foster, who presented this to us to begin with. It's not like we decided to come up with this, it was a presentation to us, and we're planning it outside of him, so I thought it would be a great idea to get his ideas of what it looks like, and then we could either support it or help build on it. And I mean, there's.
You talking about Bev and Foster? Bev?
And and I, like, as I said, I don't wanna step on anybody's toes, I was absent at meeting when that was presented, um, so uh, no disregard, no disregard to the Commissioner, uh, Foster's stance on it. So I think safely, since Councilman Matthews made the recommendation, being that he will be transitioning to the Commissioner level on the county, if that proposal is made on that level, we can work in collaborative effort with the city, so if it's posed to the, you know, county commissioner, uh, the county commissioners, um, I think that'll be the way to go, if that be the case.
And and we'll just use without stop, that's all.
Alright. What else? Alright, I guess next we got, we finished our boards and commissions discussion. We got the, um, we were supposed to go in closed session to discuss, um, a personnel issue, but we also got this LGC and NHF letter that I don't know how long it's gonna take. So maybe we oughta do that first?
You wanted to close session first, or you wanted to, okay.
Yeah, 'cause I think we gotta get that out of the way.
Can you do that?
So, um, can we have a motion going to closed session? Ron, you say it like you're supposed to say it.
You want me to say?
For a personnel issue, correct?
That's correct, personnel issue, yes, sir.
Well, and this, what about the the NHF, I, I don't have to be in closed session.
No, that's open session discussion.
Right.
Personnel.
Good move.
Is there a say?
There.
Any discussion? All favor raised right hand? Alright, we're in closed session.
Give me a few minutes to make sure we're all.
Okay.
Are you ready for this?
Um, almost. Okay, I think we're back.
Hello, Karen.
I'm Mayor Council.
Okay. So the next item, uh, new business is the LGC letter and North Carolina Housing Finance Agency letter. If I could review the, uh, letter that council members received on or about November 2nd from the LGC dated October 29th. It says, "We are concerned that Moody's Investor Services Incorporated has withdrawn its rating on the city's general obligation bonds due to insufficient information, the failure to provide financial statements and other information on a timely basis, which is essentially the FY 2018, 2019 audit. This is a serious matter, is a reflection of the quality of both governing board oversight and management practices of the city." The letter goes on to say, "We understand that the finance director, Catherine Gwynn, filed a secondary market disclosure as was recommended by your bond counsel and financial advisor. We also understand the city's audit was delayed as a result of staff and auditor turnover, and that we can expect the June 30, 2019 financial statements on November 30, 2020, which we believe is still true." It's the governing board's responsibility to ensure the audit financial statements are issued timely. Specific steps should be taken now to improve the city's bookkeeping practices and ensure the timely filing of the June 30, 2020 fiscal year end audit. And the LGC is interested in knowing what actions the city board has taken to determine that the finance department is adequately staffed and has the skill, knowledge, and experience needed to accurately and timely complete the 20 audit. Until the city completes or complies with the legal obligations associated with existing outstanding bonds and reports financial information timely, we will not recommend approval of any additional debt due to the local government commission for the city." The letter also states that, uh, within the next 30 days, council should include your plans to address the issues as noted, and response should be on the city's letterhead, signed by all board members. I ask Catherine Gwynn to put together a response for council's consideration, which I sent to you on Friday, and Catherine is here now to review that response with you, give you, and take any feedback we have, and we can amend that response as council would like. Catherine, if you could review the letter, please.
So Mayor and Council, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Um, the letter that I prepared in response to the October 29th letter from the LGC, basically they, as the manager said, they wanted an action plan for the 2020 audit. You know, how is the board addressing the issues? We have talked numerous times, uh, in open session in March, June, and again in October about the various issues that I had encountered with the 19 audit and the help that I needed, which the board was so kind to, uh, grant and authorize. So how I approached the letter was, um, basically, which you should have a copy in your, uh, packet tonight, is that the council authorized, um, the finance director to engage a contract accountant, which we have done, to help us where we were short-staffed, to help complete the 19 audit. So in, uh, terms of as we continue to answer requests for information for the 19 audit, I've had the contract accountant working on the 2020 audit, working on schedules and reconciliations. Another point that I make in the letter is, um, the council authorized a new professional position, that is, the one that the council added on March the 16th. Um, and as you know, we filled that position. Um, it's been about two months ago, um, and she continues to train and work on the 20 audit, the 19 audit, and various other projects to help relieve some of the work burden that, um, myself and the deputy director have to oversee. And then also what the council did was they authorized, we asked for in the budget four positions, the council authorized two, um, a procurement and warehouse person, a supervisor and a warehouse technician. Um, and those, those two positions were authorized, and I am working on the final job description so that we can put those out for advertisement. Um, we also asked for two technical positions, an accounts payable and, um, basically an accounts receivable position to help take some of the, um, technical duties that myself and the deputy director still are having to do because we don't have enough staff. Um, but those got cut, of course, because of the COVID-19 concerns. Um, and those are three things that the council, um, did to help alleviate the, um, having enough staff to help do the work. Um, you know, if you would like for me to add anything additional as far as, um, knowledge, skills, and ability, you know, one thing that we have talked about is that, you know, the city manager, of course, is in charge of hiring the personnel, and I was hired, um, to come to Goldsboro. Of course, I'm a licensed active certified public accountant. Um, I have over 27 years of accounting experience. About 13 of those years is actually in local government finance. Uh, my deputy director, Andrea Thompson, has better than 25 years of experience in accounting, has a master's degree, um, in business administration, and which all of her experience is actually in state and local government accounting and finance. So, you know, we, we can add a paragraph to discuss that, um, because those were steps that were taken at the time. I came January 30th of 2019. My deputy director came, um, around the first of March. So those were, um, positive steps, I think, that the council took to make sure that these positions, uh, were filled with people that have knowledge, skills, and ability. And, of course, we have discussed numerous times why the 19 audit was late. Um, we've discussed it many times, um, and you are aware of the various challenges that we had and a lot of the schedules and reconciliations and so forth that we had to rebuild. So, you know, we're at the end, we're, you know, as they say, the, the short rows, we're, we're there. So, um, we continue to have, um, weekly audit calls with the audit team. I continue to provide requests for information daily as they update, um, our collaborative worksheet, so we're continuing to get that done, and so we still have hopes that we will at least get a final draft at the end of November, and we'll be able to submit that. So, in saying all of that, talking about how do we address the October 29th letter, um, you know, they're asking, "What is your plan?" You know, we know, they know that the audit, the 19 audit is late, is expected to be done, and we are, we are soon to have that completed, and they wanted to know, "What are you doing for the 2020 audit?" I would like to say that the letter, of course, you know, is dated October 29th. Audits are due from the 460-plus municipalities, the 100 counties, and dozens of authorities and school boards and so forth. They're due on October 31st. The letter's dated October 29th. So they knew our audit was going to be late. Therefore, that's what the letter, that's why the letter was generated to the board, just to let y'all know that, that it is serious, and we take it very seriously. I can promise you that the nights and the weekends that I spend here trying to get this work done, I take it very seriously, and I care, you know, about what happens to this city and the citizens. So, we, we've done the best that we can. I think we've, uh, provided a good response letter. If the board wishes to add anything, or you wish to change anything, that we are definitely more than happy to do that. Um, there, there, she did ask for the letter, Ms. Edmondson asked for it within 30 days. And, of course, we do have a holiday coming up next week, so I just wanted y'all to be aware of that. Um, and we would just really ask that there be a consensus, um, or a vote, you know, I guess I'd leave that at the, the option of the mayor, how he wants to do that, as to approving the letter and then having all of the, the council sign it. We would appreciate it, and I'm sure, uh, the LGC would appreciate that as well.
I've got one correction to make on it.
Yes, sir.
You know what it is?
Your name?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
How do you know who Will Yumekah is?
I'm sorry. Uh, we'll get that corrected.
Anybody got any questions? Hi, um, the letter that you're responding to, a request of an action plan, and you've stated three actions that have taken place.
Mm-hmm.
But you don't speak to actions that are going to take place. Now, you just, uh, spoke to that, and I think that should be included in your letter.
Okay.
I mean, an action plan talks about what you're going to do henceforth, as well as what you've done to prepare, but I think it would be a, a stronger letter if you would put specifics in there of those actions that you just spoke to. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, like you're working on the 2020 now, and the things you're doing now.
I'd be glad to, yeah. I, I wasn't sure how wordy to get, because I can get really wordy, so I'll be more than happy to add those in there, because, as I said, since June 30th of 2020, we've been working on the 2020 audit, and we will continue to do so. And, you know, just, I, I would like for y'all just to bear in mind that the LGC will not approve a 2020 audit contract until they have the 19 audit, okay? So they've already told me that. So at the point in time that we get the final, and I'm hoping over Thanksgiving, I'm looking at the final draft to say, "It's okay, everything looks fine." Once they submit it to the LGC, it takes about two weeks for them to review it. Um, and bear in mind, we're going between Thanksgiving and Christmas, and we're also dealing, of course, with the pandemic, so we don't know if people are going to get sick, they're going to be out, who's on vacation, things of that nature. But I think because our audit is late, they will put us to the top of the pile, I'm certainly going to request that, to get that approved as quickly as possible. So we will have to come back to council and ask you all to approve the audit contract for 2020, which will be at the rate that they quoted us when they did the, or when we did the RFP back in May. And then once we send that completed contract signed to the LGC and they approve it, then the auditors are allowed to start work. We have been working for the past five months on it, but they can actually start their audit processes. And I have my weekly call with them on Wednesday, and I will ask them, you know, "Can we go ahead and get on your schedule sometime, you know, maybe January or February?" But you have to remember, it's a lot of units that have to be audited, so we have to, and they're doing current year audits, so we have to get in the order to get, um, field work done, which usually takes about two weeks for them to come out and do field work for us. So, you know, that's, you know, hopeful that, that that's happening in January or early February, just to let y'all know, that's kind of how the process works as far as getting the audit done.
When do you want us to sign this?
Um, ideally, we need it signed before, I would say, next Monday or Tuesday.
Well, can you just leave us one to sign? Those are, if you're here, if you want to sign it, we'll just go ahead and sign it.
Okay, well, and, and I think Councilman Ham would like to see a little more detail, so if I could have a couple hours in the morning to kind of work on, um, a revision to put some more things in there to talk about what...
Well, you just send us an email when you're thinking it through.
Okay, I will. I'll be glad.
Ms. Catherine?
Yes, ma'am.
First, thank you for all of the hours that you've put in to, to doing this. Um, and I do consider you the subject matter expert here. Definitely not me, but in your 13 years of experience with the local government, have you experienced this particular issue? Because it sounds like to me we're now saying the delay in our audit was a staffing issue. And I felt uneasy about the budget when I first saw it, so now, you know, receiving this letter at my personal residence, um, with concerns in how the governing body is doing with our monies and finances, it's alarming, and it's very concerning to me. So is this something that you've seen often, and is this a delay in our audit really based on transition and staffing at this point?
I think it is that, and it is also the change of auditors. Because in my working with these new auditors, you know, they're asking me for things, and I'm looking, so as, um, accountants, what we do is you invent the wheel, and then every year you roll the wheel over. You don't have to reinvent it every year, right? So when I went back to look for what had been done prior, I could not find the records. I approached the, um, previous auditors, and I asked them, "Do you want to do some contract work to help us?" And they said they were too busy, okay? So I did reach out to try to say, "What, you know, I hate to spend the money, but I gotta get this done." So I think that the transition was very big, um, because you, you had two high-level individuals that had been here for a very long time, had done a lot of work, and they had a lot of knowledge in their head. And when that knowledge left, a lot of the, the, how things were done and why things were done... done, all of that's lost. And bearing in mind, you know, that happened in November and December. I didn't get here until January 30th. So, there was a gap. And although we have an extremely dedicated and hard-working finance team that's been there for a really long time, except for the three new people, myself included, a lot of those answers, they did not know, and we just could not find the records. So, what, what my goal is, is to reorganize and to make sure that we have coverage. And as I've told numerous people, you know, you have one person doing payroll, one person doing AP, and one person doing AR, and a lot of other things. So, if COVID hits, you know, you're looking, you're looking at the person that's going to have to do pay. I mean, and I wouldn't think this board would expect, me too, but I can, doing payroll and paying bills. And that's not a good plan to have. We don't, we can't operate like that. If one part of this puzzle is missing, the city needs to continue to function. And whenever I leave, retire, whatever, I want the city to continue to function, and I want it to have good records. And we just had that transition where all that knowledge left. It was just, it was a big blow to our department and trying to get the audit done. And then, not having the other auditors there because they had the experience. You have brand-new auditors, they're asking for different things. They're asking for more detail, additional detail. So, I mean, that's what's taken us so long. I mean, I spent, I spent close to one Saturday trying to reconcile one account out of probably about 3,000, and I had to go back 20 years to try to figure out what had happened. And so, that's not every account. But I'm just saying that when you're talking about having to spend that much time, but is it going to have to happen in 20 now? Because we figured it out, you know? We, that's what we've spent the past year plus trying to get those things worked out. And I think we have. I mean, I feel better, as I told y'all back in October, this is probably the best I've felt about the books that we've got. We do have issues, you know, that we will, that'll come out whenever the audit report's given, and that will make you aware of. But they're prior period issues. They're not issues dealing with fiscal year 19. But I'm sorry, I digress. But to answer your question, it was transition, and it was the change in the auditors were two huge things, on top of the fact that, remember, we're dealing with Hurricane Matthew, Hurricane Florence, we've had COVID. Remember, brand-new budgets, new people. So, all those things combined together, it just takes longer and longer, you know, to get these things done, so. And we've had a lot of change, too.
I do have, I have questions here. So, to follow up on what Councilmember Ham said about the revision, would the deadline for the end of November for this be spelled out in the, in the date of this letter, since our signatures are required?
So, I, my last conversation with one of the partners, with Dixon Hughes, is that they were still expecting November 30th to be a good date.
Okay.
I will, again, I had my conversation with them. Our weekly call is on Wednesday. I will ask them again, is November 30th still going to be a good date? If it is not, I'll go ahead and update that. You know, being that it's Monday, you know, I'll make the revisions, and then wait till I have that call at whatever time Wednesday morning. And then, if I need to, I'll update it. But I feel like it's close because we are giving them what they're asking for, and I've not had any major stumbling blocks, you know, recently with this, so.
Thank you.
So, when will you have the order available so that I can look at it?
So, we have to have it submitted to the LGC, and the LGC has to approve it before we can release it to the council. So, what I hope will happen is that will be sometime in mid-December, I'm hoping before Christmas, that they'll give us the okay with that, and then we'll actually produce the printed bound books that we'll give to the council. And then, we would come back at the first available meeting and have the auditors come and present it. So, that's probably going to be the first or second meeting of January.
I have a concern, I have a concern about signing my name on anything and not seeing transparency. I've been asking for financial documents for quite some time, and I haven't gotten what I've asked for. And I can't honestly, in good conscience, put my name on anything, anything, without seeing some documentation.
Sure. I understand. I mean, you know, that's, I guess, your prerogative. And, you know, we've got to send something back to them within the 30 days. That's required, signature no. And, I mean, I will, I'm sure, work with the manager's office, will provide some sort of letter back to the LGC. They did ask for all the council members to sign something, but, I mean, I understand where you're coming from, so.
I have a question for Ron. Since we're not having an early council meeting in November, if the revisions are put into, or if it's revised, and it is sent out to us, because we're in open session now, sent out to us for review, and we individually come up here and sign without having to go into a formal meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
You can enter to sign, they can, they can do the letter, such that there's individual signature pages. That way, you can sign your page or not sign your page. They can do it that way as well.
Okay.
All right, y'all, we got five minutes till 7:00. Are we through with Catherine?
No. I just want, before she leaves, so she can, you know, maybe this will help with changing my mind to sign something. But I actually had the opportunity to talk to Michael Hanley, the manager of Housing Rehabilitation and Compliance. And he basically discussed what occurred. He said that the suspension took place, failure to submit fiscal year 2019 audit and financial statements. I contacted Mr. Hanley, and he stated that the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency bent over backwards, giving the city of Goldsboro extension after extension, warning after warning. He stated Goldsboro failed to submit audit in a timely fashion. Mr. Hanley stated it is uncommon occurrence for cities not to be compliant. He stated they have worked hand in hand with Goldsboro, given additional grace periods till finally it reached Mr. Hanley's desk. Six months later, that's when there were no other options but to suspend the city of Goldsboro. He stated that one of the last things they do is suspend. He called and spoke with Ms. Gwen, and she said she was working on it. Mr. Hanley stated that they could no longer wait for fiscal year 2019 audit. He stated that all the audit, all they needed was the audit to be perfect. And he suspects things are not perfect. But again, he does not know because he does not have the financial statements. And neither do I. He asked, he also stated, there would be no funds dispersed to Goldsboro without those financials for fiscal year 2019. He stated he believed in transparency and honesty, and it's ridiculous at this point that we don't have the fiscal year 2019 financials. We also will be having a capacity issue and will not be rated very highly because of the lack of financial statements. He stated if an audit is this late, there's reason for it. At long, we had a long, he had a long conversation with Ms. Gwen, but never received the audit fiscal year 19. As a result, in the future, it could be challenging obtaining funds. Also, when fiscal year 2019 audit is received, we could still be suspended if there are red flags present within financial documents. This conversation should be alarming to everyone. Until I get the documentation that I requested prior to public records policy change, instigated by City Manager Salman, and voted on by some council members, and the completion of the fiscal year 2019 audit, I cannot in good conscience sign this document.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Williams. We're going to recess till 7:00. We're going to start over at our meeting.
And our first thing to do is the invocation. Is Bishop, um, is he up there? Has anybody seen Bishop Smith?
Yeah.
You have?
No, I didn't. Just said Alex Smith.
Anybody want to give the prayer?
He here or not?
He's not here.
Bill? You're not praying right now? If you don't want.
Okay. I pray. Dear heaven and father, as we meet this day, keep us reminded of all the responsibilities we have, and the responsibilities we all have to each other. Please bless this city, bless its council, and help us to give counsel to all of those who we serve. Thank you for what you've given us. Thank you for covering us during this COVID crisis. And we ask for your help, and we ask for your love, and bring mercy upon us. In his name we pray.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands as one nation, under God, and with liberty and justice for all. Roll call?
Mayor Allen.
Here.
Mayor Precious Brodaway.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Present.
Councilmember Pollock.
Present.
Councilmember Matthews.
Present.
Councilmember Hennan.
Yeah.
Councilmember Eitak.
Here. All right, we're all here. Approved the minutes of regular meeting and work session of November 2nd, 2020.
Moved approved.
There. Any discussion? All the favor raised right hand? Anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right. Um, presentation, expressing appreciation for services rendered by Kathy Hill. As an employee of the city of Goldsboro for more than 34 years.
Is she here?
Says 34 years.
Huh? Can you hear me? I can't hear you. I assume she's here.
It says on the presentation.
Yes, on the presentation, I saw it, assumed she was here. Good evening, ma'am.
Hi.
You think 34 years is enough?
Maybe. (laughing).
We appreciate what you've done. I'm gonna read this real quick. Resilient expression of appreciation for services rendered by Kathy Hill as an employee of the city of Goldsboro for more than 34 years. Kathy Hill retires on December 1, 2020, as a laboratory supervisor with the public works, or public utilities department, the city of Goldsboro, for more than 34 years of service. She began her career on September 3, 1986, as a laboratory technician within the public utilities department. On October 10, October 30th, 1996, she was promoted to chemist with the public utilities department. On October 21, 1998, she was promoted to chemist assistant superintendent with the public utilities department. On September 7, 2007, her position was reclassified to laboratory supervisor with the public utilities department, where she has served until her retirement. Kathy is proven a dedicated and efficient public servant who has gained the admiration and respect of her fellow coworkers and the citizens of the city of Goldsboro. The mayor and the city council of the city of Goldsboro are desirous, on behalf of ourselves, city employees, and the citizens of the city of Goldsboro, of expressing to Kathy Hill their deep appreciation and gratitude for the service rendered by her to the city over the years. Therefore, we resolve by the mayor of the city of the city of Goldsboro that number one, we express Kathy our greatest wishes for success, happiness, prosperity, and good health in her future endeavors. This resolution shall be incorporated into the official minutes of the city of Goldsboro, and shall be in full force and effect from this to 16th of November of 2020. I offer that for adoption. So moved. Check them. Any discussion? Anybody in favor, raise your hand. All right, motion carries. Are you here for your official job? Ms. Kathy, are you sure you've been here 34 years? Because you sure don't look like you could have been here five years. God has been good to you.
I say he's been good to me too.
We're gonna miss you so much.
Been keeping our water clean for all those years too.
Kathy, why don't you come up here in front of Goldsboro. Close your round of applause. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, do you want an opportunity to say something?
What? Yes.
I just want to say, I came here in 1986, and at that time, when my job had ended, I worked for the state, and my job had ended, and I came here, and I thought, I'm not gonna be there too long. And I've been here 34 years, and I've really enjoyed it.
Well, we appreciate everything you did while you were here.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. We'll wish you the best in your future. Good luck to you. All right, Tim, now we've got the government experience award recognition.
Yep. Scott Williams, our IT director, is gonna tell you about that, and we'll bring Darren in, since he's a major portion of why we won this award.
Does Darren have anything to do with it?
Darren's got a lot of things around him.
Good evening, Mayor.
Mayor.
Good evening.
So, the city of Goldsboro won a government experience award from the Center for Digital Government. The award recognizes achievements and best practices from states, cities, and counties that are radically improving experience of government and pushing boundaries on how citizens and services are delivered. Top government jurisdictions and agencies and departments were honored with awards. Project awards have a single focus area and can include one or more methods of interaction. They gave out 30 government experience awards, 10 going to cities. Goldsboro was recognized for a project called Chatbot for Citizen Engagement, and were recognized with nine other cities, including Orlando, Pittsburgh, Sacramento, and St. Louis. And Darren Grofsky is primarily responsible for most, if not all, of the work behind the scenes on this project. So I'd like to recognize Darren for his contributions to the city, and present him with a plaque recognizing his efforts for the Chatbot for Citizen Engagement. A larger version of this will be placed in the IT lobby as well.
Mayor, can you take your mask off?
Put it back on.
I wish I knew about a few of those that he does.
Thank you for what you did. You want to say anything?
I'm honored to say it. You guys got any questions? I could talk all day on it, but I'm good. Thank you. It was neat to get this. Do a lot of neat stuff, and it's fun to be recognized.
Tell us about this, about what you did.
The Chatbot?
Yeah.
It does a number of things. You know, a lot of the, what it got recognized for, some of the big ones were the public can ask about, when is my trash day? And they'll put in their address and get their trash day, the recycle day. You can ask who my council member is, and it'll ask me for her address, and it'll tell you what your, who your council member is. You can ask all sorts of questions. How much is a, how do I get started to get water service started? I need to report a problem. You can say, I found a pothole, or there's a fallen tree, and it understands natural language. And then it'll go through a series of questions that'll then input that data directly into our public works, work order system, so it'll automatically go to them and automatically get emailed to the superintendent in charge of that. So we encourage the public to report a problem. It's very similar to 3-1-1. But they can say, report a problem, or they can, any other natural language term about fallen trees, sinkholes, potholes, and it'll prompt them for the question. So that's one of the neat things. The other really neat thing is for employees, they can get their vacation balance, they can get their salary, their higher, higher date, just a couple of quick texts, and they got it all. So, some neat stuff.
Thank you. You made us really more efficient here, so I appreciate that so much.
Thank you.
Good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Darren.
All right. Now we've got public hearing.
Thanks, Darren.
And the first one is D. Where's Jennifer?
I'm sorry.
You need a minute to get set up, or you okay? Okay, so our first one over here is gonna be D 920, Chesley Taylor.
Good evening. Item D is Z 920, Chesley Taylor. The property is located on the southwest corner of East US 70 Highway and Carriage Road. The property is currently R 20 residential and residential manufactured non-conforming, and the applicant's requesting to rezon the subject property to R 12 residential in order to develop the property for residential use. The subject property was previously occupied by a non-conforming manufactured home park that existed prior to their adoption of the city's unified development ordinance. All manufactured homes have been removed, and the lot is currently unoccupied. Surrounding zoning to the north, you have residential R 20. To the south, east, and west, you have general business. And also to the west, you have residential R 20. The subject property is unoccupied and vegetated with pine, trees, and large shrubs at this time. The property is not located in a special flood hazard area. City water and sewer are available to serve the property. The city's comprehensive land use plan designates the property for low-density residential use. However, the plan recommends that areas accessible to water and sewer services and proposed for infill development, higher residential density should be encouraged and allowed. The subject property is located within the 6569 DNL zone of Seymour Johnson Air Force Base noise overlay contour. Base officials have indicated that measures to achieve an outdoor-to indoor noise level reduction of at least 25 decibels should be required for any residential structure proposed for the site. At this time, there is no action necessary, and the planning commission will have a recommendation for city council at your meeting on December the 7th. And here are some pictures. This is looking at Carriage Road. It's the property that is wooded, you see before you. And then this is another direction, so the property is here. And it is indicated to staff that the applicant has indicated to staff that they would like to construct two duplexes on this property. Any questions for staff?
Is this, I mean, now this is our public hearing.
This is public hearing, yes, sir. I'll check. I'm not sure if there's anyone out there, but I'll, I'll ask.
Can you check real quick? Okay.
What's that near? What is that near? Yeah. I can't recognize it.
I guess it is not. We will open and close this public hearing and move to the next.
Item E is Z 1020, Wayne Oil Company Incorporated. The property is located on the northwest corner of Wayne Memorial Drive and 4th Street. The applicant requests to rezon a portion of the subject property from neighborhood business to general business conditional district for the operation of an automatic car wash. The requested zoning will be associated with the recombination of two individual lots. And the two lots, just to be clear, here is an individual lot one, and then your other lot is this here, and it will be recombining both of those. The line you see here is just a zoning line. It is not a property line. So the area proposed for rezoning roughly has a frontage of 164 feet along Wayne Memorial Drive with an area of .926 acres, and is currently zoned neighborhood business. And that is what you see in the hatched area here. Surrounding zoning to the north, you have R 9 residential. To the south, R 9 residential, office and institutional, and neighborhood business. To the east, you have neighborhood business, and to the west, neighborhood business and residential R 9. The subject properties are currently occupied by existing business formerly known as Wayne Oil Company. The city's comprehensive land use plan recommends commercial development for the property, and the proposed rezoning would be compatible with the comprehensive plan. On January 3rd, 2017, Goldsboro City Council approved a change of zoning request for a portion of the property from neighborhood business to general business conditional district, limiting the use of the property to retail sales of auto parts and accessories. As of this date, the property has not been developed. The remaining portion is now being considered for sale and commercial development. And just to go back, so we understand, that's the portion that was rezoned in 2017.
It would be zoned what?
Uh, it was rezoned in 2017. That was the one for conditional district for auto parts.
And this hash one is still neighborhood business?
It is currently neighborhood business today, and asking for conditional district for the car wash.
And then what's the middle one?
The middle remains neighborhood business. So in the event, this portion becomes developed, and they want to use this portion, not knowing exactly what's gonna happen here, they'll have to come back if the zoning does not allow the development at that time. The submitted site plan indicates a single-story, 3,604-square-foot building of masonry and brick construction proposed for use as a drive-through automatic car wash facility. A floor plan has been provided and consists of an express tunnel, car wash, a library area, an office, restrooms, and an equipment room. In addition to the car wash, two automatic pay stations are proposed for the site, 28 parking spaces, and 31 vacuum stations to be used by customers of the business. Hours of operation are Monday through Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., Sunday, 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., with four employees. The site will be served by two new driveways off 4th Street. Driveways are being limited to entrance and exit only, with the entrance driveway being the most northern driveway, which is here. NCDOT has reviewed the proposed car wash and supports no driveway access from Wayne Memorial Drive if the proposed site can have potential safer access elsewhere. If the city is concerned about proposed access off 4th Street and absolutely requires access from Wayne Memorial Drive, NCDOT would require turn lane along Wayne Memorial Drive and only allow a ride-in access. So what that means is here, you would only get a ride-in only, so it would only benefit traffic coming towards the car wash. Any traffic coming from Herman Street to access the car wash would still have to use 4th Street.
And if, if that was to take place where they, they would turn in off of Wayne Memorial, would they be exiting off of Wayne Memorial as well?
So ride-in only. They would have to, the site would have to be reconfigured, and they would still have to exit off of 4th Street.
Because that's the challenge right there. I've been in that community, and there's seniors there, there's families with children, and you know, you're talking about 4th Street that's very narrow, and cars coming in and out of there, you know, so.
But, but currently, that is the only comment I have received from NCDOT. 4th Street is a city street, and Wayne Memorial Drive is maintained by NCDOT.
I mean, my hope would have been that, basically, you can go in that way and leave out that way.
Um, I, I, I mean, just speaking for, I mean, I can't say this 100% sure, but my thought process would be, the reason they're not allowing here is because of the, there is a safer entrance and exit off this way. With the driveway being too close to this, it could be a safety hazard as well. Just not a far separation distance enough for the driveway. A total...
And that's, that's my, I'm sorry. That's my concern as well, because if you look at Scruggles on the corner of Central Heights in Berkeley, I mean, it's a nightmare getting out of that intersection. I've seen something similar to that, of course, on a smaller scale, but it's, it's already kind of hard to, to come out of 4th Street where the florist is on the other side. I mean, and Seymour's across the street, and I know with businesses, they have to put landscaping in as well, correct?
Um, on the front...
With new businesses on the frontage for that.
Yes, they would have, um, they're gonna be able to use some of this area for street trees, and they would need to modify, or need a modification for shrubs in this area. I mean, they, they're showing it. I mean, we can keep them to a limited, you know, height, but, um, the UDO does require landscape requirements along the street frontage.
Yeah, because that, that height is a, is an issue. Being in a low-riding car, I mean, if it exceeds a certain height, then it's gonna be an issue. Being those cars off of Wayne Memorial, only able to turn one way, I, I can foresee a lot of incidents with that as well, so that's, that's my only concern, as far as also with the close community right there behind it, with the noise, with the vacuums. I guess I'll talk when they come in.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think overall, when it comes to the landscaping, if, if this is approved, I think that the community probably wants some big trees over there. Hide in that structure, opposed to just looking at this, you know.
And I'll discuss that a little bit more further in the agenda item. A total of 28 parking spaces have been provided, including two handicap spaces. A drive-through aisle is shown, beginning at the rear of the site for stacking of an estimated 14 vehicles upon entry into the car wash bay area. Exterior sidewalks are not, well, they are now. At the time we did the agenda memo, the applicant had not indicated sidewalks, which we have been in contact with them. So the, the site plan you're seeing does show the sidewalks. The applicant is required to install sidewalks along Wayne Memorial Drive, as well as 4th Street. The applicant is requesting a modification of installation along 4th Street, and asking to pay the fee in lieu of sidewalk for 4th Street, but they are proposing sidewalks for Wayne Memorial Drive. The applicant plan, or the landscape plan indicates a required type A 5-foot-wide landscape buffer along the northern and eastern property lines, and appropriate plant material is shown within those buffers. There's this type A buffer in here. Just street trees and VSA shrubs are required along Wayne Memorial Drive and 4th Street. The proposed building elevations for the car wash exterior consist of a metal standing seam roof, Eiffel's wall system, split-faced masonry block, and brick veneer columns, stacked stone, veneer bases, and architectural wood brackets. I do have, this is a site in Greenville where they just completed. This is, so this is their typical prototype, and this will be the same type of material colors, elevations that are being proposed for the Goldsboro location.
Is that the one up in Rosewood?
Uh, no, this is in Greenville. But it operates and functions very similar 2 to 1. That was just recently approved and started, opened at the 581 and 70.
Yeah, that's what I'm... Jennifer, I have one other question. Have the homeowners been approached on the other?
They will properly, anyone within 100 feet is required to be notified, so they were notified as, as well as a sign being posted on the property. Not, to my knowledge, no one's called my office referencing or asking questions about it, but I do know you have several people here to speak regarding this item. The property is not located in a special flood hazard area, and city water and sewer are available to serve the property. Stormwater calculations, grading, and drainage plans have not been submitted at this time. The site plan does indicate a proposed stormwater pond to serve both the car wash and future development of the adjacent property to the east. The applicant will be required to submit plans in accordance with city engineering standards before construction permits are released. And at this time, there is no action necessary, and the planning commission will have a recommendation for you on your December 7th meeting. And, um, sorry. Again, this is the existing Wayne Oil Company. These buildings would be demolished as part of this proposal. This is a view from 4th Street.
Whatever it is, be better than that.
Any questions for staff? So I'll, I'll let folks know that we're ready.
If you're in the public hearing, you might want to say your name.
Go up here to the, um... Oh, thank y'all again. You remember, I was here last month, and, um, at that time, we had just asked for a kind of a car wash rezoning request, and now we've hunged it down to be a, well, a site-specific or a use-specific, specific request. I'm sure Jennifer's been giving you the, all the details on everything. I'd like to know, be glad, does, does anybody have any questions on, on what she's gone over with you that I might could provide some further information on?
Yeah. One of my concerns was, um, your entrance and exit is on 4th Street. I think that it would be, in my opinion, and from talking to the people in the community, if it was approved, it would be better coming in off of Wayne Memorial. That way, the few houses that are over there, it's elderly people, and it's also a couple of families with children a little further down. So, you know, to make it, you know, a little safer, all the cars not coming out right on 4th Street, if it could be adjusted a little bit, and they can come in through Wayne Memorial.
The, uh, the narrowness, narrowness of the lot in proximity to, I mean, Wayne Memorial, obviously, is a major thoroughfare in the eyes of DOT. The narrow, the proximity of the intersection there is what would prohibit that. I, I do understand, um, where you're coming from, and it is something... I do understand where you come from, and it is something that I could talk to DOT about. It's just that, in doing this type of work for thirty-plus years, you kind of have an idea of what's going to be allowed, what is not going to be allowed, and they just don't like normally entrance, exits that close to an intersection.
Well, I know currently, there is an office there, and people pull, they have pulled in right in there, right off of the street. So I don't know what would really be the difference if people have already used that office and pulled in right in front of it.
Yes, sir, Mr. Williams. And what DOT causes it is a change in use. When there's a change in use in the, in the, what's being, what business is at that location, they kind of have a chance to get their claws in you again, for lack of a better word.
Okay. Well, I know from-
But I'm going to note those comments, and I appreciate it as well.
Because I noticed actually, you know, what Ms. Collins submitted, she said that there is a possibility that you can't enter from Wayne Memorial. You just can't enter and exit from Wayne Memorial. So in DOT, you know, they just will require a turn lane over there. So, I mean, I think that, you know, we got to take into consideration the families that are over there, the children that are over there, and if we can make it, you know, a little bit more, less congested on Fourth Street, I think that would be hopeful, in my opinion.
One thing I did before I came to the meeting tonight, I went to the, and I, when we first started working on this project, I went to the site, but I, you know, didn't, the two houses that you referred to across the street, you know, I still didn't have a good mental picture of those, so I, you know, looked at them on Google, Google Earth, and then did some scaling, and then, when I was out there tonight, before I came here, the houses are, in between the two houses, is just about where that rear drop, the center of the two houses as they exist now, about where on our map it says Fourth Street, that's just about where it's, you have a house here and a house here. Like, yes, they would be right across from the entrance, but no, they would not be looking at the building itself. I don't know if Jennifer shared it with you, but I went out there to the site in Greenville today, that I had told you all had just been built, and just to look at the lighting situations. You have no aerial lights, everything's wall packs. You can see, it's kind of hard, the, these are downlights here shining directly down, and then you have wall packs. And the wall packs are not known for their glaring protrusion onto other properties. So I think we, from a, you know, because in any type of commercial use like this, across the street from residential uses, you know, light pollution is always a concern. Another concern of mine that I got the answers to tonight was, you know, is the radios playing? And I talked to the owners of the car washes, and it's displayed on every, every other vacuum station about no noise, and they also have three employees, three to five employees on-site at all times to monitor, you know, when people get feeling the groove a little bit too much and have their music turned up too loud. The one in Greenville that they own, that is about a quarter mile from my office, I've never been out there, and I frequent it often, and never been there and hear the, you know, the thump, thump, thump that the kids like to play these days.
I have a question, sir.
Yes, sir.
You spoke of light and sound pollution. What about, I mean, what about sound pollution? How many vacuums do you have on-site? And are they inside, or are they exterior vacuums?
They are, Mr.-
Pollock.
Pollock.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Pollock, they are outside, they're in a, they're a central system here and here. So they are enclosed with a sound slash screening type of facility, and I was out there today for the very same reason. It's not a high spin-up noise that you think you would hear.
Because she means, how many vacuums do you have?
Well, what it is, is the actual vacuum is here and here.
Okay.
And then the whole, the trunk line runs through all these drop bags.
Got you.
And then the drop bags, you know, it's just like a central, two lines, and then you have your feeder lines off that.
Okay. Kind of like the one in Kentston next to Golden Corral, I don't know the name of that, if you're familiar with that. What's the name of it? Yeah. The reason I'm asking, I know sometimes, like, we're talking about the decibels, I know sometimes a leaf, one leaf blower on one street can wake you up. So I'm wondering, with this many vacuums, would the decibels exceed an amount where the close proximity of the residents would be affected? That's my only concern.
Yeah, that's something that I could get some counts on before the, before the next meeting.
I appreciate it, sir.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Pollock, just to answer your question, it's thirty-one in, I think, the news that I'm watching.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else here have any questions? All right, we'll excuse y'all, and this is a public hearing, so...
There's another person coming.
You want to speak, John?
There's a homeowner that would like to comment?
Are you our suite, Mr.?
No, I'm just here in case there was any questions.
Thank y'all. Thank you, sir. Y'all have a good evening.
You too.
Thank you.
I'm Kathy Lancaster. I own the property at nine thirteen Fourth Street, and I just found out tonight that they were going to build a six-bay car wash right beside my property. I never imagined a car wash that big. My thinking was maybe a two-bay car wash. Last week, first month of my renters paid their rent, I asked them about a car wash, how they feel about living beside a car wash. They emphatically told me they were going to move due to the noise and increase in traffic. My understanding is the car wash was going to drive off of Fourth Street as well, which would be right beside my driveway, and my concern, this is the first time I've seen this, is the noise, what it's going to do to my property, it's going to cause a family to move. I've rented this property for twenty years, never had a problem with renters, no crime, no nothing. Quiet, peaceful area, and which is going to negatively impact, and these not rich people that live there, Ms. Ruthie Pittman is a janitor at a public school. The next house to over by is Mr. Rayner, and he's a veteran, older gentleman, very nice, lived there forever. And it's going to destroy those pieces of property, and that's my concern. And really, if you're going to allow a car wash, please, I beg, noise barrier, blockout if you, because you're talking about operating Sunday through Sunday. It's never going to be any peace in that whole corner neighborhood. Every time I tend, well, I would probably have one, looks out of kitchen window, people would be looking at a car wash, with what I saw, maybe twenty vacuums, and the noise, and how unsightly this is going to be. So I'm asking you to consider either a quiet property, don't take away, that's what I'm asking. I pay my taxes, just don't take away, or you'll be dislocating some nice folks, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is anybody else? Anybody else in town? Say that again.
Planning commission would be excused, and then public hearing on the-
We're done with this, all right? All right, so we're going to close this public hearing on item E., Wayne Oil Company.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Item F is a public hearing and approval in principle of proposed issuance of multifamily housing revenue bonds by the Burlington Housing Authority. Federal tax law requires that taxes and bonds be issued to finance multifamily residential rented facilities, rental facilities be approved by the elected legislative bodies of the governmental units that have jurisdiction over the area in which the facilities are located after holding a public hearing in accordance with IRS Code Section 147-F. The Burlington Housing Authority requests of affiliated or related entities of Vitus Group LLC, a Delaware limited liability company, and Affording Housing Institute Incorporated, a Florida nonprofit corporation, will be known as the borrower in the agreements, proposes to issue the bonds in the principal amount not to exceed fifty-three million, five-hundred thousand dollars to finance the acquisition and rehabilitation of a portfolio of low-income multifamily residential rental facilities, including the Jefferson Court Apartments, which are located at eleven hundred North Jefferson Avenue here in Goldsboro. The portion of the bonds to be used to finance the acquisition and rehabilitation of this particular Jefferson Court Apartments is approximately six million, one hundred thousand dollars. Under state law, in order for the Burlington Housing Authority to issue the bonds for a facility located in Goldsboro, the city must agree to cooperate with the Burlington Housing Authority in the financing of the development through the issuance of bonds by this housing authority as the issuer and to authorize the Burlington Housing Authority to act on behalf of the city in connection with such financing. The Burlington Housing Authority and the city will enter into an interlocal government agreement to establish their rights and duties related to the issuance of the bonds, under which the city will be entitled to receive certain fees in connection with its cooperation in the issuance of these bonds. The Burlington Housing Authority and the borrower have requested the city to approve the issuance of the bonds for purposes of the Act and Section 147 mentioned before of the IRS Tax Code and approve the intergovernmental local agreement. The bonds are expected to be issued in December of 2020 and be sold in the public market. The borrower will agree to repay the principal premium and, if any, in any interest on the bonds. The city will not have any liability whatsoever for the payment of principal interest on the bonds, and the bonds will not affect the city's debt ratios or legal debt limit. The tax approval resolution explicitly states that in its adoption and shall no event constitute an endorsement of the bonds or development or the creditworthiness of the borrower. And notice was published in the news argus as accordance with law. Just a few other comments I'll add in regards to this. This is part of a fifty-three and a half million dollar bond package that Burlington Housing Authority is acquiring. I believe there's seven other properties scattered throughout the state or other areas. They're going to spend about six point one million on Jefferson Park. There's sixty units at Jefferson Park. They're going to spend about forty-five thousand dollars a unit to go through and rehab each individual unit and improve it, to improve the quality of life for those residents. We have no legal responsibility or liability for the payment of principal of these bonds, and the bonds won't impact our debt ratios or debt limits. All costs and expenses in connection with the financing, including reasonable fees for our city's council, et cetera, shall be paid through the bonds themselves. Also to point out that we do have Ms. Kristen Kirby, she's actually outside, she's a bond attorney with McGuire Woods, who can come in and explain in detail how the bond process works. We had that planned for the work session, but we didn't get to it, but she can come in and speak and explain, and there's a representative of Vitus here who can go into more detail about their specific plans for this particular project. Staff would recommend that council at the conclusion of a public hearing adopt a resolution approving in principle the issuance to not exceed fifty-three million, five hundred dollars of multifamily housing revenue bonds by the Burlington Housing Authority to finance a portfolio of affordable multifamily housing developments, including Jefferson Court Apartments in the city of Goldsboro. For the purpose of meeting, the requirements are the Internal Revenue Code of nineteen-eighty-six as amended, and authorizing the mayor to approve and execute the interlocal governmental agreement with the Burlington Housing Authority. As I said, if you have specific questions, Vitus is here, and we do have a bond attorney here who can go into great detail about the bond questions. If you have, I'm not a bond expert, I know probably just enough to be dangerous. Has been reviewed by staff, our attorney, our finance director, and other staff members, and we're pretty confident that there's just no liability there for us on this. I hate to use the term pass-through, but the money's kind of passing through us, and the Burlington Housing Authority will actually be the one who's issuing the bonds in this particular case.
Why is the grand on there? Why is the grand in there?
The grand is the next item on the consent agenda, and it will be, it's a similar situation, but it's in a different phase of it. Like, this is further along than the grand, but it's a similar deal, exact same type of bond deal.
Randy, I have one question. Is this a purchase, den, or renovation, or do these people already own?
And my understanding, and Vitus is here and will speak, my understanding is they already actually own the Jefferson. I believe they bought it in April, they had a little presentation we were going to go over at the work session, but changed that plan, and I believe they bought that in April. I believe they will use the bonds to probably finance or help pay for that, that's a question they can answer when they come in. But they do own that according to information I saw.
Okay, thank you.
And I guess that addresses my question. I was going to ask, it seems that we're bringing another entity in our backyard, was the Goldsboro Housing Authority presented with this proposal?
Because my understanding, they did approach the Goldsboro Housing Authority first, and they declined to participate. Vitus can explain that, but that was from my understanding how it was presented. There are some advantages with us being involved with it, from having, there is some small fees that we would acquire in it, especially on the grand, there would be a bigger fee, and some other things I'll discuss when I get to the grand one, which is the first item on the consent agenda, but they were asked to deal with them on at the housing authority, and they chose not to.
My concern is that we'll be using their legal counsel. That's always a red flag to me when we're using somebody else's attorney. I don't feel comfortable with that, and also have a concern, we already have our bond issues here, and now we're entering in with Burlington Housing Authority, I just don't see how it's going to work. And I don't, and I also, I'm still speaking, sir, and I feel like, you know, we're going to be liable if something happens. You're saying that we're not going to be acquiring any risk, but there is going to be risk. When we sign and partner with them with this bond, there is going to be risk. If they take and something happens with those apartments, now we're going to be managers, and the city is not managing units. That's not what we do. So I have big concerns in regards to that.
The side out there is Counselor Williams. I mean, you can read it all these units. That could be a big plus for that neighborhood.
It could, yeah, and, I mean, we should have been focused on our own bonds for the housing authority we have here and the housing we have here right now. That's, we're kind of like-
The housing authority you have here doesn't like to partner with them.
Well, they don't want to partner with them, they don't want to partner with them for whatever reasons. Maybe it wasn't lucrative enough for them, and maybe we're not even, it's not even going to be lucrative to us. We don't really know if we don't have our own legal counsel.
What happens to the residents while it's happening? That's my major issue.
They have a plan to how they will, you know, I guess, take the unit temporarily out of service, or they'll work around them. In regards to that, they submitted a lot of information, I couldn't bring it all that was attached, and Vitus can come in and explain that, but they do have a relocation plan, it's actually a published document that they gave me that does explain that, and I don't believe they plan to just totally move someone out of a unit, I believe to work around them, and maybe sometime they would have to get out- work around them, or maybe sometime they would have to get out to do some of the work. Because it's extensive renovation, it's been 45 grand on an individual apartment unit, and redo paint, counters, flooring, roofing, a little bit of everything, mechanical, HVAC and all that. It is extensive, so I'm sure it will be some inconvenience to the property, to the resident there, but they'll obviously wind up with an almost new unit out of the deal.
So I see you have fees in place here, that we may be getting fees, but you don't, I see 25%. What is that, you know, like, to me, that could be $20,000 from, you know, and they could be making millions or half a million, you know? So I don't know if that's really lucrative to us.
Yeah. I think the real advantage, especially from the Burlington one, because the Burlington one, the first one here, they're actually issuing the actual bonds for it, and it's just because it's in our jurisdiction. My understanding is how it was explained to me, and Ron sat in meetings and whatnot with me, so he might can help me as well. I believe that we, I believe that they get, Burlington gets 1% of the, of what, of the bond amount, and I think since we're not doing any monitoring or anything really with this that we have to do or obligated to do, I believe we get 25% of that, that I computed to be about $15,000. So I don't think we make a lot out of that one particularly at all, especially the first one, the one we're talking about here under the public hearing. I think the advantage is, is that you obviously get $6 million worth of investment in the community by going through and renovating those particular units, which may or may not happen if the bonds go through or whatnot. But no, on this one, there's not going to be a huge cash payout to us or anything of that nature. You're absolutely correct about that, yes, sir. And as I said, I do have a bond attorney here who can come in and ask more detailed questions about the bonds, and I do have Vitus here, who I'm sure will like to speak during the public hearing component of it.
Do y'all want to hear from either of them?
Well, one more question I have is, and I don't know if you can answer it, Randy, but does that drive up the cost of the unit for the tenant?
That's probably a good question for Vitus, they can explain it better in detail, but they are subsidized, you know, and there are income limitations and whatnot that will follow, so that shouldn't affect that in a manner.
And how do we know that they won't repair them and then just sell the properties?
Well, there is, I believe, a 20, 15- or 20-year recapture provision on it, but I can't guarantee if there's something in the law that would prevent it from selling it something in the future. I'm not an expert in that regard. Because properties do obviously change hands and the rights with it or whatnot, loans and stuff and other things carry along with them. But I probably recommend you open the public hearing, and then I can bring Kristen Kirby with McGuire Woods to come in. She can try to go over quickly the bond piece to it, and also Vitus can come in and explain to you in more detail and answer some of your more specific questions. As I said, we had a little presentation worked out that we're going to cover during the work session, but had to format it a little differently with this being a public hearing now at the 7 o'clock.
I mean, what I'd like to see, you know, once the city clears up the issues with the bonds, that we wait and we get a bond to fix up all the affordable houses here that are all in disrepair. We got a lot of affordable housing here already that is in need, and we could be getting that money ourselves, not getting crumbs from partnering with somebody else.
Yeah. There are some advantages, this may show us a better way to do some stuff, you're correct about that. Also, this is not supposed to affect our ability to borrow money or affect our, you know, how we would operate or affect our future ability to borrow money. I think it's a process in which they front the money. If they're going to spend $6 million, they put the $6 million in an account, and it's drawn down from there. That's how there's no liability or risk to us and how it's managed. That's how it was explained to me. But like I said, I'm sure the bond attorney can go that in more detail when we open the public hearing.
You want to open the public hearing? How about you?
I mean, I'm just kind of curious as to why our Goldsboro Housing Authority decided to not participate. I think that's something I would like to know.
Well, you should go sit down and talk to him.
Well, he said that the Vitus people could explain that to me.
Yeah, Vitus should be able to explain that because they communicated that through us when they approached. I was wanting, we asked that question as well.
But it would, it still would hurt you just to go talk to him sometime. We'll just see.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. My name is Kristen Kirby. I'm an attorney with McGuire Woods in Raleigh. We are bond counsel to the Burlington Housing Authority in connection with the proposed bonds. I think specifically now we're talking about Jefferson Court Apartments. So Jefferson Court Apartments is being financed as part of a portfolio of eight low-income housing developments located in seven different cities across the state. The total amount of bonds is approximately $53.5 million. Roughly $6.1 million of that is being used to finance the rehabilitation of Jefferson Court in Goldsboro. In order to finance all eight of the properties together in a single bond deal, we needed to select one housing authority to be the issuer and then have an agreement from the rest of the localities in which the projects are located to cooperate in the issuance of the bonds. So we're here before you tonight to have the city council approve the fact that the Burlington Housing Authority is being the issuer, as well as to hold the public hearing and give the approval required under the federal tax code for tax-exempt multifamily housing bonds. The bonds will not create any financial liability on the part of the city. They are solely to be repaid from payments made by the borrower. Because the city has no financial responsibility with respect to the bonds, they don't count in your debt ratios or your legal debt limit, or show up in your audited financial statements. They're just paid simply from payments that the borrower makes under the loan agreement with Burlington Housing Authority as the issuer of the bonds. And that, in this particular deal, the bonds are actually short-term bonds. They'll only be outstanding during construction, so for roughly two years. They're being sold in the public market, and they are secured by cash. So at all times, the bond trustee will be holding sufficient money in cash to pay all principal and interest on the bonds through their maturity. So because, excuse me, because of that very secure method of financing, the bonds are able to be sold in the public market with a AAA rating, so a high investment-grade And then the additional financing for the project and the security, that cash collateral comes through a HUD mortgage loan. So HUD is also involved in reviewing these projects and approving them and is giving a mortgage loan for each of the eight properties. We decided to finance them all together in one deal because on their own, each of these financings is relatively small. They're all fairly small apartment complexes, 50, 60, 70 units in most cases. And the transaction costs that go into a bond financing are pretty significant, so it's much more efficient and economical to package them all together into a single So that's the reason why they're all together. Two of the eight properties are located in Burlington, and the Burlington Housing Authority has issued these kind of bonds in the past and has experience with doing 4% low-income housing tax credit bonds. And so they were approached to be the issuer, and will be issuing the bonds for all eight of the properties in the portfolio. And this is just referring to Jefferson Court Grand at Day Point. It's a different type of deal, which I think is later on the agenda, so we can come back and explain that one separately. But again, there's no financial liability for the city, and because of, you know, we just need your approval for two reasons. The state law requirement that we have approval from each of the other jurisdictions where the eight properties are located to cooperate with the Burlington Housing Authority and to allow the Burlington Housing Authority to be the issuer for bonds located in the city. And then the second reason is for the requirement under the tax code that there be a public hearing, followed by an approval from each elected legislative body having jurisdiction over the sites of the projects. So realize that's a lot of information, but I'm happy to answer any questions you have about the bonds or the financing or the city's role in that.
Who owns Jefferson Court?
Vitus currently owns it. They purchased it, I think, in April, in April of this year, in anticipation of doing this transaction. And so the purchase plus the rehabilitation of about $45,000 per unit will be financed with that $6.1 million of bonds. Yes?
What's the bond rating of the company?
So these bonds will be rated AAA because they're secured by cash.
I didn't hear you.
AAA.
AAA? Okay.
Yep.
That's, thank you.
Sure.
Lady, this happened, Jefferson Park happens to be in my district. Is this lady going to speak about Vitus?
Yes. Brooke Sherrett is with Vitus, and she'll speak more about the actual construction piece of it, the rehab plans, and about the developer Vitus. But just as bond counsel here to answer more questions related to the financing and the legal aspects.
Anybody got anything else?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for having us tonight. My name's Brooke Sherrett, and I'm with Vitus. We are a national affordable housing developer based out of Seattle, Washington, but we're very active in the southeast and in particular in North Carolina. So as Kristen mentioned, we already own Jefferson Court and the other seven properties that are in that eight-property portfolio. We acquired those back in April. And we also own a property in Charlotte, North Carolina, and Wilmington. So we do have some experience here. We've got some properties in Tennessee and Georgia, all over the southeast. We own over 110 properties across the country, and we've been in the business for over 25 years. And this is what we do. We do acquisition rehab, so we buy existing affordable housing buildings. We refinance them with low-income housing tax credits and tax-exempt bonds and complete pretty substantial rehabilitations. And that's exactly what we intend to do here for both Jefferson and Grand at Day. So for Jefferson in particularly, in particular, you know, it's a 60-unit apartment complex. I will speak a little bit about what we're planning to do. I think Randy and Kristen already mentioned it's about a $45,000 unit construction budget. So it's pretty significant, and we're bound to the construction requirements that North Carolina Housing Finance Agency requires. So we're doing that and more. So that includes things like replacing all of the flooring, replacing cabinetry in the kitchens, new appliances, new plumbing fixtures, and plumbing appliances, I guess that's a fixture, and basically just fully rehabbing the unit so that the property is comparable to a market-rate unit. In addition to interior fixes, we'll also be doing pintuck masonry fixes, replacing roofs, sidewalk repairs, and then asphalt repairs in the parking lot. We are required to do 5% of the units converted to ADA-compliant units. So for this property, that, let's see if my math is good here, that's three units that will be converted to handicap-accessible at Jefferson Court. And then two units will be converted to be sensory and hearing-impaired units as well. So that's the overall goal. In addition to, or as part of our rehab, we are also extending the affordability, so we're renewing our Section 8 contract. That's the federal subsidy that helps pay the rents or helps subsidize the rents. That gets extended for another 20 years. And then in addition to that, the tax credit restrictions keep the property affordable for 30 years. So the property will be preserved affordable for a minimum of 30 years. We are long-term holders. We buy property, and we hold on to them for at least 10 years, usually closer to 15. That's when they become re-eligible to be resyndicated for another, either another investor or another developer to do tax credits, or for ourselves to resyndicate and kind of do the same process over again if the property needs it. So that's kind of our investment profile, and that's what we intend to do here. So we're really looking forward to, you know, working with the city and making this property, you know, hopefully rejuvenated a little bit. I don't know if there's any specific questions about the properties that I can answer, but I'm very happy to, if you have any.
Any questions?
Good, good.
I have a question.
Yeah?
Just, first off, to clarify, Vitus does own Jefferson Court.
Correct.
And you're in discussions to purchase Grand Day?
Correct. We're under contract to purchase Grand Day.
Does that look probable?
Yeah, we're, let's see, I think we're a month out from our closing date. We have acquisition financing set up. We just, the inducement resolution is actually like the last thing that we need in order to close.
So I'm looking at your renovation schedule here of activities. It's pretty aggressive, and it's a very positive plan. But I also see down here that no tenants will be displaced during this. This is mostly inside work.
Correct.
Except for roof, and maybe some outdoor, HVAC, or something like that. How do you propose to do all of these things within the confines of an apartment and not displace the tenant?
Yeah, that's a great question. So the, I guess, small asterisk on that is that during the day while the contractor is working there, especially now during, you know, COVID and precautions with that, we will set up a vacant unit or the community room, depending for Grand at Day Point, they have a community room for Jefferson Court. It would be a vacant unit, and set that up as a hospitality suite with a TV and snacks and things like that, so that the resident can move out of their unit from 8:00 to 4:00 while work is going on for, usually it only takes about five to seven business days to complete the unit. And then they can go back into their house by the end of the night. So for dinner, they're back in, their kitchen is fully functional, they won't be displaced from sleeping in their units at any point. There will be a period of a week and a half or so where they will be asked to leave their units for the day so that the work can get done.
Will you be doing multiple renovations, I mean, multiple apartment renovations at the same time?
Yeah, usually they're staggered in such a way that they do like two or three at a time. So we will have to work out for social distancing purposes and things like that to make sure that, you know, if everybody's being asked to go to this community room, we're not having 12 people in that room at the same time. But typically, yeah, it's like two to three that are being worked on at the same time.
So one of the existing apartments would be used as a community room?
Correct. An existing vacant unit.
If it's vacant?
And we do have a vacant unit currently, and we're going to just hold that, so we won't be filling it.
You reset those aside.
Correct.
And a tenant would be displaced temporarily during the day to the hospitality room. That tenant probably would have had breakfast and will have dinner back in their apartment. What about noon time? Who's going to take care of their... Who's going to take care of their food for that period of time?
Yep, that's a great question, too. So we can either, what we typically do is we give a food voucher or a, you know, a per diem to, so that they can purchase lunch, and that's most likely what we would do. In historical projects that we've worked on, we've provided food, but given, again, with COVID-19, it's probably better to let everyone kind of decide for themselves what they would like to do for food, so I think it's based on whatever the state publishes as a appropriate lunch per diem. So I don't know that number offhand, but it's, you know, it's like $10 a person or something that we would give to them so that they can go get dinner or lunch on their own.
And my final question is, once this renovation project is completed, will you have local representation in terms of maintenance and management?
Let me make sure I understand your question. So we have, the current property manager is continuing to stay there, so they'll be continuing to manage the process throughout, and there is somebody on site. They will continue to stay there, both maintenance and management staff. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions?
Anybody else got anything?
Yeah. So are you saying that they're still, I don't know if I misunderstood, Councilmember Hannah's question, will they stay there after the completion of the project, too?
Our management team?
So your management team is going to be there managing the property while you guys are constructing? Is that what you're saying?
I see it. I think I see what you're saying. So VITUS will have a representative once a month for the construction draw meetings present, and then after that, we don't have a physical presence on site. We rely on our third-party management company, Multifamily Select, to provide us with feedback about how things are going. So we are not a management company. VITUS itself is not a management company. We're purely the owner, and we hire that service out.
So let me ask the question. You mentioned you're third-party. Is that third-party local?
They are based in, oh, gosh, what's the, it's in North Carolina. It is not local to Goldsboro, but the person that is hired at the property is local to Goldsboro.
Okay, so you were, okay.
So we have the same management company manage all of our properties in North Carolina. They're based, it's a suburb of Charlotte, I'm forgetting the name, but it's, yeah, so they're based in the state, and then they have, you know, their staff are regional and local.
I'm going to go back to my, I'm going to put the situation. I'm a tenant. 10:00 at night, my faucet breaks, I got water coming in. Who do I call, and how long did I take, does it take to get someone there?
So there should be a hotline set up for after-hours, and that would go straight to Multifamily Select, who should have somebody on-call 24 hours a day to fix that. So it would be somebody in our, in the Jefferson Court Management Office, there would be a, you know, voicemail that goes straight to the maintenance staff. Does that make sense? And then VITUS would get a report from Multifamily Select. Let me know.
Everybody done? All right, he likes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim, Rang, can I close the vote here? Is anybody else up? Okay. Thank you all. Have a safe trip home.
Thank you. Thank you for waiting so long.
All right, so that's, we're going to close the vote here for Item F, and we're going to move to I M G, which is resolution giving preliminary approval.
Now, it says in the, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, it says in the Item F, this is public hearing and approval in principle of proposed issuance of multifamily housing revenue bonds. Does that mean we have to vote on the?
Well, it means they want you to. You don't have to.
They would be requesting a vote on that item so they can move forward with that project and the bonds.
Was that your motion to approve?
Yeah, that's my question, and if we need a, shoot, my mind went blank. If we need to have a, shoot. I need to take you to my brain doctor.
Make a motion to approve?
Yeah, I make a motion that we approve. Motion was the word I was trying to find.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Anybody favor raise right hand? Pose likewise. Do you for or against, Antonia?
Against.
So four, three, Melissa.
Would you tell me who, could you, I didn't say Councilmember.
Brandy voted against it. Oz was against it, and Antonia voted against it, and we voted for it.
Thank you.
All right, so you got that, right? Now we're going to move on. All right. Approval of resolution giving preliminary approval to the issues of multifamily housing revenue bonds again, and this is for Grand Day.
This one's for Grand Day, and I've asked him to stay in case questions do come up in regards to that one, and I'm not going to read through the formal agenda item, I'll just kind of hit the highlights because it's very similar to the previous project that we just discussed about. This is the inducement resolution for tax-exempt bonds for the Grand 2,300-day circle to be issued and acquire and rehab the Grand at Day Point. VITUS is under contract to purchase this property, and this is not as far along in the process as the Jefferson was. Jefferson was towards the end of the process. This is more, I guess, in the middle of the process where they are in the kind of timeline of this. If we do move forward with an inducement resolution, which is basically a preliminary approval, say we want to participate in this project with them, it'll come back in the spring for a public hearing and more details and more contract-type documents worked out at that point. This involves $14 billion of housing revenue bonds for the acquisition and rehab of the Grand. It's about $8 million will be involved in actual rehab of the 160 units at the Grand. That's about $45,000 a unit. We'll have no legal responsibility or liability for the payment or principal interest of the proposed bonds. As I said before, they're secured bonds in that there's money put up during construction, so that's why they're AAA-rated bonds. All costs and expenses in connection with the financing, including reasonable fees for our city's council, et cetera, are paid through for the bonds. We will receive a fee to issue and monitor the bonds. I believe that the draft language says 1%, I believe, of the bond amount is what's listed in there. VITUS has agreed to install more security cameras, and we have discussed with them participate in funding improvements to the city park. Remember, we've had discussion of that park in front of the entrance there at Grand Day, right where we built the bus stop, try to go make some improvements to the basketball courts and the playground and other components there. I've been discussing with them about funding those improvements as part of this financing package, and they've agreed to participate in the funding of that. Once they get all their sub-bids and whatnot out, they'll determine exactly what dollar amount they will participate to, but that will come back when we bring it back for a public hearing later in the game. Now, council approves the resolution. Once again, there'll be a public hearing on this in spring and additional paperwork in 2021. Very similar to the previous one, I guess the difference in the one we just talked about was Burlington Housing Authority, we'd be kind of filling their role of being more involved in the project and the issuance of the bonds. We'd have a monitoring that we have to do every, this once a year was the information that we got. It's a pretty simple monitoring package that they had sent us, and they're getting very similar to the other one, except we're more involved with this one, hence why we get the 1% fee, which may amount to about $140,000 or something like that, plus we would get some advantages of the security cameras as well as some playground improvements at the park. Once again, we do have them here to answer any questions, if you have specific questions that I can't handle.
Anybody have any questions? Now, I do have one question. This, why couldn't we weigh a little more on this because of the timing, because you're not ready tonight?
So for this one, due to our purchase-and-sale contract, we have to purchase the property before the end of the year. For a tax credit execution, in order to get your purchase price into your tax credit basis, you have to have the inducement resolution, and so that's why we kind of sped you guys along on this one so that we can fulfill our purchase-and-sale agreement, contract. Does that make sense?
Tax credit, okay, I got that.
Anybody got any questions? All right, well, I guess we'll open up the public hearing, but yeah, I don't really have any things, probably don't have to.
This is just the consent agenda item for the inducement resolution. This isn't as far along as the previous one. We'll come back with a public hearing once it's vetted out a little more of contracts and actually ready for the issuance of the bonds.
All right. Who's going to do Item H? Is that Catherine?
Yes.
All right, thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's crazy.
Mayor and council, I have amending the grant project fund ordinance for the community development block grant and the home investment partnership special revenue fund. On October 7th, the city of Goldsboro was notified by the Department of Housing and Urban Development that they had approved $794,767, broken up into CDBG of $351,137, and home of $237,076, and they had also allocated for the CDBG Coronavirus Cares Act $206,654. The outlined use of the funds was approved by the city council on July 13th, 2020, with the approval of the FY 2024 Consolidated Plan, or CON Plan, and the FY 2021 Annual Action Plan. These funds will be used to assist low-to-moderate-income citizens of Goldsboro to improve their quality of life through vital housing and community development programs. Also, in addition, we estimate that there will be approximately $7,168 in program income that will be leveraged, used to leverage our federal grant dollars. There is no match required for the grant. The period of performance is July 1, 2020, through June 30, 2021, except for the CDBG CV, the coronavirus funds of $206,654, which will be June 30 of 2022. Tonight, we are asking that the council, by motion, adopt the attached grant project ordinance amendment for the CDBG and home fund special revenue fund in the amount of
No question.
Anybody got any questions? All right. We got Item I.
Sir, my next item is to accept or reject the initial bid and authorize finance to advertise for upset bids for 422 Wilson Street from Sergio Sanchez. Staff has received an offer to purchase the city-owned property. The council must either accept or reject the offer, and accepted authorized advertisement for upset bids according to GS 168 266 and 168 269. We received an offer from Sergio Sanchez on 422 Wilson Street. The offer was $1,340. The bid deposit was $67. The tax value is $2,680. The offer is at least 50% of the tax value of the property, and the bid deposit is at least 5%, and has been received in the form of a personal check. Tonight, I'm asking now if the council will either accept or reject the offer on 422 Wilson Street, and if accepted, I have attached a resolution authorizing finance to advertise for upset bids.
Anybody have a problem with that?
Which we're going to do, accept.
What?
We have to make a decision whether to accept or reject.
Yeah, we do. I just want to ask if anybody had any problem, because if you have a problem, we've got to get it off of here.
I'm saying accept it.
Okay. All right. Except, Item J. I'll vote on Item J.
Okay. My next item is to accept the final upset bid for 619 and 621 Slaughter Street. At the September 8th, 2020 meeting, city council authorized staff to advertise for upset bid for 619 and 621 Slaughter Street. We did receive one upset bid during the first upset period from Cox Real Estate. We readadvertised again as required by law. We did not receive any further upset bids. So at this time, we're bringing, as required, to council the final upset bid on 619 Slaughter Street from Cox Real Estate. The offer was $2,020. The bid deposit was $101, and it met all the requirements of the upset bid calculation. We also have 621 Slaughter Street. That particular property is actually a city and county jointly owned property, so we would be splitting the proceeds with the county. 619 Slaughter was a city-owned property. Again, the offer was Cox Real Estate. The offer was $2,020 with a bid deposit of $101. And so tonight, what I'm asking is that if the council is willing to accept the upset bid offer on 619 Slaughter Street and authorize city officials to execute the documents, I've attached a resolution for your approval, and also to accept the upset bid offer on 621 Slaughter Street, again, from Cox Real Estate.
Anybody have any problem with that? All right. Item K.
Yes, sir. Okay. Sorry. Okay, that's, should be Ashland's, I think. That one's Ashland. I have Item O. Item K would be for Ashland.
Okay, well, how about let's do Item I.
Okay, you can go ahead and skip. Okay. So my Item O is amending the grant project ordinance for the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security, the Cares Act's miscellaneous grant special revenue fund. This is the second reading. We did not have a supermajority at the first reading, so again, this is the same item. There are no changes. This is just the second reading of that item, and this item is on the action agenda. So just FYI, if you had any more questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Just keeping my list, not part of consent agenda items.
I'm sorry, what?
I know. Yeah, I just realized that, yeah.
This is not part of consent agenda items. We approve consent agenda items in the whole book, and we do have the digital act lines. Just make sure that you can't miss the digital act line, that's okay. Settle it.
I got it. All right. Well, since I don't screw that up anymore, why don't we just go back up to the, do we have Item L? No, I'm sorry, we have Item K, right?
Okay.
There's K right there. Actually, we've been in here a long time, and we're tired. Don't come in here trying to take advantage of us.
Yes, I want to keep it quick. So I have Item K, and tonight I am asking mayor and city council to accept the second wave funding of the North Carolina Tourism Promotion Recovery Grant in the amount of $10,750. On October 29th, the tourism department applied for the second wave of federal funding. This is made available to destination marketing offices or tourism departments like ours across the state. The North Carolina General Assembly created a $1.5 million appropriation to help eligible destination marketing offices experience reduced ability to market their destinations due to revenue loss caused by COVID-19. The first round of grants were awarded beginning of October 2020, which we accepted in the amount of $15,000, and a lack of initial participation from these marketing offices across the state caused a surplus of available funding at the state level, which led to the second opportunity for tourism offices to apply for additional relief funding. So that's what tourism did, we went after a second wave. These tourism promotion grants are designed to provide relief to areas across the state, most dependent on travel and tourism, so small communities like ours. And as part of the application process, the, our department submitted a planned use proposal outlining which advertising strategies would be used with the awarded grant money, and these strategies and content had to align with the specifications of the Cares Act guidelines, and it has to be reviewed by the North Carolina Tourism Promotion Grant Review Committee. The final outcome of the advertising methods will be audited to ensure compliance with the federal guidelines as well. The acceptance of this grant requires no match from the city. So tonight, I'm just asking the council to accept the grant in the amount of $10,750 by adopting the included resolution, which would also, I also ask you to authorize us to execute the documents to go ahead and receive that money.
Any questions? Any questions for Ashlyn?
Good.
All right. Thank you, Ashlyn.
Thank you.
Next, we got item L, advisory boards and commission meeting schedule. Can you even listen?
Yes, sir. The Goldsboro Municipal Golf Course Committee voted at their October 21st, 2020 meeting to begin holding their meetings quarterly on the third Wednesday of that particular month. It's recommended that council adopt the revised meeting schedule for the city of Goldsboro's boards and commissions. The first meeting on that new schedule will be January the 20th, 2021.
Any questions?
Okay. Your item M is rescheduling the council meetings for 2021 due to holidays, and we reviewed those at the last work session. It would just make changes to the following meetings. Monday, January the 18th, 2021 would be moved to Tuesday, January the 19th. Monday, July the 5th, we would be combining the July meetings to Monday, July the 12th. And Monday, September the 6th would be held on Tuesday, September the 7th.
And if we, I mean, that's, if we approve the consent agenda, that's good, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. And then item N is departmental monthly reports. Does anybody have anything there? I don't think so. Then I think we're done with the consent agenda. And, um, go ahead.
So consent agenda items G through N are presented for council approval.
I'll make a motion to accept the items G through N.
Is there a second consent agenda?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, oh, vote for Melissa.
Mayor Allen?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Protem Broadway?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
No.
Councilmember Matthews?
Can I ask a question? So is it too late to ask for an item to be removed from the consent agenda? As in, is it too late? No?
Councilmember Podlak? We're taking a vote on the consent agenda.
Yes.
Councilmember Hand?
Yes.
Councilmember Akak?
Yes.
Okay, so I think consent agenda passes. All right. Next, we got items requiring individual action. And we got item O, which is a grant project fund ordinance. I guess that's a...
That's just, we talked about it. We've got to do it again.
That's what you just discussed, you voted on it.
So do we just need Catherine back in here? Oh, we don't even need her.
She's already presented. At this point, we all make a motion to approve the motion.
All right, does anybody need any more conversation on item M? Anybody want to make a motion to approve it? Or to honor approve it?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed likewise. Um, Melissa, I think it was, did you go?
I voted yes.
Okay, it was seven of us.
Thank you.
All right. Item P is John Sawmill. I guess she's got to come back for that. Jennifer? Jeff, you're really holding us up.
This, this item, obviously, you previously have gone through, and I can go through all of it again if you feel that we need to. But kind of like Catherine's item that she just presented, because its zoning requires an ordinance adoption, it requires a two-thirds vote, majority vote, and it was on the consent agenda at the last meeting. So at its first reading, it is required to have a two-thirds majority vote, which it did not obtain. So it's coming back before you tonight for a second reading, which it only requires simple majority. So I just need to entertain another vote because since the zoning did not pass on its first reading, the item Q, which is the conditional use permit, technically did not pass at the last meeting also. So I need to have individual action taken on both of these items.
All right, item P, what would you all like to do?
But I can go through the entire process again if needed.
Anybody here knows what it is?
You need my...
I make a motion to accept the recommendation of the planning board and approve John Sawmill Northeast Quarter on Belfast Road and I-795.
Is there a second? Second. Any discussion?
Is that a rejection or accept?
Accept. What?
I was just clarifying, accept versus reject.
Um, so all those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed likewise. Okay, four to three, Melissa.
Thank you.
Passes. All right, then item Q is to use CC20 as the same site plan.
Yes, sir. This is the site plan, our conditional use permit that is required for a operation of a sawmill.
Okay. Is there a motion here?
I make a motion to accept the decision by the planning commission to do the site plan on John Sawmill.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed likewise. All right, motion clear.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, we got the city manager's report.
Yes, sir. We'd like to recognize the Public Works and Public Utilities Departments that worked hard during Tropical Storm Etna. Four to seven inches of rain fell away on Wayne County. We had flash flooding. The Public Works Department worked very hard to make sure all those issues were addressed as soon as possible so that we could open roads as soon as possible. The Neuse River is reaching major flood stage, and the Public Utilities Department did a great job of preparing for that worst-case scenario. So kudos to them. I'd like to thank the Parks and Rec and Travel and Tourism Departments for coordinating and supporting the lacrosse tournament that went this weekend at the Bryan Multi-Sport Complex. In accordance with the North Carolina Governor's executive orders, the feedback I'm initially getting here is very good from the directors to the athletes and the parents involved. And lastly, I'd like to recognize the Police Department who finally got their Kalia certification. It was awarded by the International Accreditation, the advanced law enforcement program. So a noteworthy accomplishment after years of work that will say a lot for our Goldsboro Police Department going forward. Thank you, sir.
Well, I would like to commend and thank the Police Department. We started talking about that thing three or four years ago, the Kalia thing. And so they said it would take a while, but they stayed with it and they got it done. So I think it's a great thing, and I think it will make our Police Department more accountable. So hopefully, that'll be good.
And I'd like to add to that. I'd like to thank the Police Department for passing the Kalia program. And I also want to thank Mr. Charles Wright. I think we all remember him. He advocated for the Kalia program, and he pushed us to hold our Police Department accountable. So thanks to Mr. Charles Wright for that.
Um, well, I think, you're done?
Yeah, I would just also like to add, went to a nice presentation this morning by the Police Department on community policing. A very good presentation by the police officers involved, and we hope to see more of that in the future.
Okay. All right, Councilmember Williams?
I just want to wish everybody a happy holiday. Remember to protect yourself when you're around people that aren't in your immediate family. We need you here. We need you to be safe. We need to make sure our hospitals don't get overwhelmed. Also, I want to thank Housing Authority. They didn't get a lot of notice when they did their Wi-Fi program in our community. A lot of families are getting free Wi-Fi because of their actions. So I think that we ought to acknowledge them when they're doing great things in our community. Goldsboro Housing Authority, Mr. Anthony Goodson. Thank you.
Is that it?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I just want to congratulate the Kalia, but also the Public Works. When I was riding around looking at all, during that rain and all those bubbles that I couldn't get around, there were guys out there in the white trucks and the yellow jackets and rakes, and I saw a lot of small pickups, which meant some supervisors were raking too. And I appreciate that. That's all.
Question, Paula?
I just want to acknowledge the passing, the passing of two community leaders that transitioned since our last meeting on the left, impacted many lives. And Ms. Gerda Brown, who was a pillar in the Red Town community for over 60 years before her health decline, she was very visible patrolling the community that I represent and assigned the elderly, and assisted the elderly in her community, and frequently transported children to school. She passed away on November 7th, 2020. Last but not least, the second person I would like to recognize was a role model in my life personally, Mr. Harold L. Isler, Sr., who served in the United States Air Force and served faithfully as a Goldsboro police officer who dedicated 26 years of service to the city of Goldsboro. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Matthews?
No comment. No comment.
No comment. Mr. Hand?
Mr. Mayor, I want to commend our Goldsboro Police Department for a couple events they recently held. They put together a combined group of police and police department personnel, school resource officers, patrol, and other members of the Police Department. And they focused their events towards building relations with the children primarily, although parents were obviously invited. And today, Captain Rayburn and the people who participated in this, I gave a presentation that was attended by yourself, City Manager and myself, to go over the events. One of them took place at WA Foster. The second one took place at Fairview Homes. And they went out and solicited prizes and funds from various businesses here in Goldsboro to support them. It was reasonably well-attended based on the short notice they had. But the kids that did attend, I'm told, were highly receptive of this practice, and they will probably be doing it again in the near future. But they did serve food, refreshments, they had games, and they had prizes, which makes it all more entertaining. But I want to commend our police force because they did this on their extra time, spare time, their personal time. They put forth a lot of effort in planning for this, and each one of them who briefed us, and each person that participated in it had a part of the presentation, talked about how rewarding it was for them as well as the children. So again, the police, our Police Department is understaffed now, but this is a way of trying to build relationships and get the, our Police Department out in the public eye, and hopefully we'll see some people coming in wanting to serve the city. We all know that the police throughout our nation is under a lot of fire, unjustified in my land. But this is our Police Department stepping forward, taking the initiative, trying to show that they're a part of our community and to build that trust. So I commend them.
Thank you so much. Glad you did a good job. Councilmember Ray?
No comment.
Melissa?
Yes, sir.
There's a...
Proclamation?
Yeah, I don't know, I don't have mine. Any chance you got it?
I do.
Let me know when you get it, and I'll see if I can deal with it. You got it? Yeah. Thank you so much.
Give me a read.
Yes, sir.
Small Business Saturday proclamation. Whereas the city of Goldsboro celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 30.7 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7% of all firms with paid employees in the United States, are responsible for 64.9% of net new jobs created from 2000 to 2018. And whereas small businesses employ 47.3% of the employees in the private sector in the United States, and 62% of U.S. small businesses reported that they need to see consumer spending return to pre-COVID levels by the end of 2020 in order to stay in business. Three-quarters of U.S. consumers are currently looking for ways to shop small and support their community. And whereas 96% of consumers who shop on Small Business Saturday agree that shopping at small, independently-owned businesses supports their commitment to making purchases that have a positive potential economic and environmental impact. And whereas 95% of consumers who shop on Small Business Saturday reported the day makes them want to shop or eat at small, independently-owned businesses all year long, not just during the holiday seasons. And whereas Goldsboro, North Carolina supports our small businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as a Small Business Saturday. Therefore, I, Chuck Allen, Mayor of the city of Goldsboro, do hereby proclaim November 28th, 2020, as Small Business Saturday in the city of Goldsboro and urge residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. In witness thereof, I here too place my hand and seal affixed to the city of Goldsboro, North Carolina, 16th day of November, 2020.
Thank you, sir. The only thing I got left is I do just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving that's coming up before we meet again. Just remember, please, there are those that don't have what we have, and if there's anybody that needs help, help any way we can. Everybody say safe. Everybody have a great Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I say one other thing? Please?
What?
I said please. I'm so sorry I didn't thank all the constituents, my constituents. I really appreciate all the things that you've done to make my, my job easier, all the people that came out and supported and voted for me. I really appreciate what you've done for me. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we stand adjourned. Thank you.